So, good morning and welcome to the City Council's special meeting FY26 Budget Retreat for December 12th, 2024. Good morning and welcome to everybody. We're going to start with a pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to ask Lori that you lead us today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lori. Item two, which is a agenda review. Do we have any deletions or additions or changes in the order of the agenda items this morning? Okay, I guess we have none. And we'll go to number three. This is for comments and questions from the public, not related to the agenda, but also related to the agenda, because the agenda is about the budget day. So if there are any comments from the public right now, we'd be glad to take them.
Can I, can I start as we invite other people up, even though I'm not a member of the public?
Sure.
Thank you. So I want to take a moment to introduce Anna Dabaski. She is back there. Anna is our new data manager and joining us today as part of her orientation to hear the department's presentation. She joins us part-time starting January 1st. Anna comes to us with data management professional expertise in academic settings, working at several universities in Texas, at nonprofits, including the Nature Conservancy and in a utility setting. We're really excited to have her on board. She's got a BA in linguistics from Northwestern and a master's in science and information science from the University of Copenhagen. So she's already hit the ground running in her orientation and we're thrilled to have her. And you will see a lot more of her in the months and years to come.
Welcome, Anna. So, but Bob, before you raised your hand, the lady in the far back raised her hand. So did you want to come up and? Okay. I think since it's a public meeting, we can take comments at that time if you'd like. Right? Okay. And in the far back?
No.
Can you have to come down and speak into the microphone and identify yourself and give us your social security number? No, turn on the, push the little button to make sure it's bright green.
Okay, great. My name's Anna McKenzie. I live in Mayfair Park. And I do a lot of walking and biking. And so I usually go a lot. I use the path, the little, well, they call it a path, but it's, it's dangerous. Between Williston Road and Kennedy Drive, there's only one side of the wa, the road you can walk on, on Heinzburg Road, and it's treacherous. If you're not looking down, you're going to stumble and fall. And if you're on a bike, it's like a roller coaster. And so, and it's very narrow. So if people are walking, you know, you have to like get out of their way. And because it's on that side of the road, it's, it's hard to avoid people. So you, you know, because it's probably this wide. And it's, it's supposed to be for bikes and pedestrians. I also, and it's come to my attention that there was a vote on a budget item to allocate more money for sidewalks and paths. And it was voted, it was four to one. And I really feel like more money in the budget should go towards that, especially that particular one. And I know, talking briefly to Bob, he said that in 2028, you are going to improve it, but something needs to be done now for the public. And if you could allocate more money or maybe push that more towards the forefront for projects to be done, that would be great. And of course, we all know Dorset Street Bike Path, which I use a lot, is, is in terrible shape because of tree roots raising up the pavement and so forth. And lastly, I'd like to thank the council for supporting Winuski and Burlington in their effort with the Air Force and the F-35s. I live in Mayfair Park. I live in the first street and the noise, I think they're starting to use the afterburners. It's, it's horrible. It's painful to my ears. I'm standing outside. And I just wanted to thank you for what you've done so far. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Anybody online? Okay. All right. Well, then we'll move on to item number four, which is the to receive the budget presentations from the departments for the FY26 budget. This will include individual presentations from police, fire, public works, a combined presentation from library and recreation and parks, and a general government presentation from the administrative department, city manager's office, legal, IT, HR, communication, city clerk, community development and planning and zoning. There will be time for the council to ask questions or request additional information. No decisions are needed, but recommendations on how to move forward in public discussions in the future are appreciated. Feedback from the community is also welcome. So I guess I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. How is everybody doing? They're well-trained. So this is for me, one of my favorite council meetings of the year, because it's our opportunity to talk to you about your largest policy document, which is your budget. So we received the overall proposed budget presentation on December 2nd. And today you'll hear from many of the department heads about the details of what's in those operation, operational budgets. Ultimately, you'll have discussion, discussion at the, today, you'll have discussion at your meeting on Monday night. You'll have discussion on January 6th, and on January 13th, you'll have a public hearing and move a budget to the voters for consideration on town meeting day. So today, we're really trying to give you a bit more meat on the bones of what is in this budget. And we also, throughout the day, welcome your questions and ideas of scenarios or options you would like us to consider bringing you additional information on as you make a decision on the 13th. This is our proposed schedule for the day. We can certainly move that around if folks would like to do something differently. But this is how we will, how we plan to proceed through the morning. Just as a reminder, if you're looking for the documents, if you go to this link, which is in my overall budget presentation, or you go to the website, finance department, FY26 budget, all of those, all of the budget-related documents are linked there. I do want to note that, if I can click, the budgets you will hear today presented by the department heads are all based on the 3.39% scenario. There are other emerging items you will hear, but the, the proposed budget we are recommending is a 3.39% scenario. We also have this alternatives and options spreadsheet that we are tracking, that I will continue to track throughout the conversation this morning. So over your next conversations, you can think about things you would like to add or take off from the budget and what the, what the ultimate impact will be on the tax rate. And then just a reminder of where we're going from here. Today, we're having a retreat. Again, really, the goal of this morning is to hear from the department heads. You'll have an hour at a minimum on your council agenda on Monday. Also anticipate that you'll receive an additional ask from SB 3C, which is not included in this budget. On the 6th, you'll continue to have conversation. And I anticipate, I've learned that you'll receive an additional ask on Saford's to school at that meeting, and then the public hearing on the 13th. So that is where we are going today. Are folks good with that plan? All right. So with that, I will stop and we will kick off with Tom DePietro at Public Works, which means I need to make him presenter. Oh, no, he can present. Look at that. You're doing it.
One second. All right. Morning, everybody. Tom DePietro, Director of Public Works. I've served in that role for three years on January 9th. But before that, I've worked in the city for about eighteen and a half years. I'm going to present a little more than half of our Public Works budget divisions. And then when we get to the facilities division, I'll turn that over to Eric McCallum, who's our Deputy Director of Capital Projects. So broad overview time for these first couple of slides. Public Works is up to forty-four full-time staff. Our vacancy rate is below 10%, which is great. The only issue we have here is I put up kind of our breakdown by division is that our vacancies tend to be concentrated within the highway division. So that is a lot of our sort of highway labor positions, highway maintenance, or those entry-level jobs. We've had some, some difficulty filling those positions. Otherwise, we just need to hire one other person in our facilities division. But we are up to forty-four full-time folks. And this is again, just a very high overview slide. This is similar to a slide I've included in previous years, so I wanted to include it again. So I think over time, if folks were interested in seeing how the city has grown, you kind of refer back to this for, from an infrastructure standpoint, anyway. I guess the only thing I would point out here, the big changes were some additional gravity sewer line and some more water meters. We had about seventy more water meters than we had last year. And it's just due to ongoing development in the city. If we take over roads in the next couple of months or in, in the new year, these numbers are going to go up again. So I kind of be, keep an eye on it for next year's presentation, I guess. But I think one other thing I'll note is, as far as Vermont goes, we are among the highest in many of these categories as far as infrastructure size and kind of what we manage in South Burlington. And then one other kind of broad level, just the number of projects we're managing at DPW. I couldn't find an easy way to put them all on one slide. So I tried to pick out some of the biggest ones. Hopefully, you're all familiar with most of these. Some of these account for like twenty things. For example, many stormwater management projects I have listed there, RRP's, that represents about twenty different projects that our stormwater team is working on. But this is against a very high level, and our staff is undertaking quite a bit. We've bid quite a bit out recently. Folks will notice that the water tank will be on the website by the end of the day or beginning of the week. That will get bid out. We just opened Dorset Street Phase Four paving bids, which you will see at your council agenda on Monday. And we're rebidding some work under a parkway to repair a water line. So you'll, you'll see all this if you keep an eye on the bid section of the city page. Lot going on. With that general overview, I'm just going to jump into kind of the, the template slides that we have for each division. So first up is highway and park maintenance. Just want to highlight a couple of successes in FY24. So first is paving. So as you know, FY24 starts in July of '23. That's when this paving took place. So the money that was set aside for '24, we actually used as soon as we could in, in late 2023, we're able to pave these streets. In the spring, we discovered some rot and corrosion on a bridge, so we had to shut it down. We were actually able to get out and repair that. I'll say relatively quickly, certainly not as quickly as folks would have liked, but at a pretty low cost to get that back opened up to the public. We replaced the surface as well. And then we're going to work that into our capital plan for kind of future replacement when this repair, you know, that's not a forever repair. We're going to eventually have to replace it. But we were pleased that we were able to open this up in a reasonable amount of time. Something that's been going very well for us is the amount of salt we have to use to clear our roads after storms. So it's difficult to gauge that, right? We can't just say, well, how many tons of salt did we use? Because every winter is different. So the way we've been measuring that, we find the best way to do that is our per lane mile cost. And I'll show you in a second slide. We've really been driving that down using a lot less salt and, and liquid salt. And then I also want to highlight just the sidewalk installation that our crew did out of Memorial Park to connect the bathrooms to the event site. So here's this chart. Again, this is our combined cost of salt and liquid chloride. And we've got this data back to 2012. We've driven this down in a variety of ways. A lot of this is investment in our fleet and sort of the equipment that we use to plow roads to really scrape those roads better, requires us to use less salt. A lot of it is training staff, getting everybody to say, all right, we want to use 250 pounds per lane mile at this point, make sure everybody does that. And so it's gone very well. And as we replace our older equipment, you know, we'll, we'll keep knocking this number down. One of the things we're going to look at this winter is Winuski is supposed to be getting a brine maker, so we use a different product. But if Winuski has that, we may be able to work with them to test that out, to try to do some pre-application to see if that can even drive this down further, kind of changing how we manage things. And so our, our deputy, deputy, our, our operations manager manages our, our salt and our plowing operations typically.
Has the cost of salt gone up over time?
It held from last year, actually. It held the same number as last year. Our FY26 budget in highway and maintenance is very similar to what you saw last year. The couple of highlights here, I guess, is we increased road striping by $10,000. And that'll allow us to do a little bit more in that regard. And we just clarified a couple of items here with the tree care. So now we've got our tree maintenance line item, and then our tree replacement for ash trees. That's in the capital projects, right? So this is something that was kind of going back and forth. We did our tree treatment of ash trees through the line item budget, because that's more of a maintenance thing. And so that just allowed for better and clearer maintenance when the management. CIP, a lot of familiar stuff in there, hopefully for everybody. The one thing I did want to highlight, or two things, I guess, was paving. So we've got one and a quarter million dollars for paving. Like I mentioned, we just opened bids for Dorset Street Phase Four, and that's around a million dollars. We'll talk about that on Monday evening. And so for FY26, the goal is to get back to doing a lot of other streets. So Dorset Street has taken us about four seasons or four budget seasons to pay for that stretch from Williston down to Kennedy. So we're finishing that up. And we're going to be getting back out in other areas of the city. And this is our tentative, underline bold tentative list. It looks like asphalt numbers have held pretty well from last year. So sort of our, our predicting what we'd be able to do. This is hopefully going to be accurate. I might hope we'll be able to add a few more things in there even, but we'll, we'll have to see how that goes. Fleet, we had previously put some money aside for a compact wheel loader to help clean snow and ice. We just managed snow and ice from our forthcoming pedestrian bridge over 89. It'll allow, the piece of equipment will allow us to get on there and clear the snow off. And we'll certainly be able to use that in other roads that are somewhat tighter for our current equipment. For example, when we except Garden Street and Front Market Street here, we feel like we'll be able to use that piece of equipment. So this is a little bit more funding for that. And just noting that we've got some money there to replace one of our, our smaller runaround vehicles with an EV. And just as an additional note, I'll note, we put a purchase order in yesterday for an electric lawnmower. So you'll be seeing that along the edges of the highways next summer. Don't have a delivery date on yet, but I'm assuming we'll be able to get that. And we'll have our crew running around with that. So that'll be great for folks to see. Sorry? I can send you the info. I don't have it with me, but yeah, we, we just finished that up. An emerging issue, I already alluded to this a little bit. So staffing, we've been having trouble hiring CDL drivers as sort of that entry-level position. We've done some shuffling around between our divisions and staff, but we haven't really added those new people. And so that's been a concern. We're trying to figure out ways to get them in the door. I think we've had this bullet on there in some fashion for the last number of years, but just the ongoing development in the city obviously leads to an increase in infrastructure, which we need to keep up on and maintain. So we just got to make sure that our budget and our staff are keeping pace with those needs. And then just continuing to adapt to climate change and associated weather events. So we've been very lucky. Some of these larger storms, if it's central Vermont, and we've been in a position to help and not in a position where we need help. But at some point, you know, our, our luck will change there. And some of those big storms are going to hit us, and we may be in a different position. So we're doing everything we can to kind of increase our resiliency when that sort of thing happens in our, in our municipality. Should I keep going, Jesse? Or should I stop after each division? There's six.
I just want to say that the Kimball Lab Bridge with Williston has worked out really well so far. I mean, it's, it's pretty robust, right? Meanwhile, Spear Street is still cut, right, in Charlotte. Again, they're dealing with, like, they have to put a, you know, a box bridge or culvert. And it's been cut since that last term in July, right? So we are lucky at this point. Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. So I just asked one clarifying, I'm sorry. Question on, you know, when you see gaps in staffing, and as you said, it's been for, for some time. The natural assumption is something can't be done because you don't have the staff. Is that, is that true? Is that part of the challenge? Or is it more, most of the challenges are outsourced, so that the staffing impact does not necessarily affect the ability to make, do the maintenance, the, the striping, the laying of asphalt, you know, just to understand it, because I think that's a natural.
Yeah. So there's, there's certain, I'm going to speak to stripings. I think that's the rest of this question. There's certain stripping we do in-house, crossbars, crosswalks. We can do some of that. We have a small piece of equipment, electric, how we can get out and do that. When we go talk about the long lines, so those double yellows, fog lines, things like that, we don't have that equipment to do that well. So we have to hire that out. There's a limited number of contractors in the state that do that work. So we were always looking for folks that are willing to help us with that. So in that respect, we have to put a budget number right in the line striping. And we'll bid that out. Again, there's only two folks there that will bid on that. So that makes it a little bit difficult to get that done on the timeline we want. And that's very weather dependent as well. As far as having less staff, like filling pot holes and things like that, right? Like, just the work that our staff is able to do maintenance-wise, if we're missing people, we may be only able to form one crew, because we're working in the road. So we're going to need flaggers, or we're going to need multiple people doing this and that. So it does sometimes limit how much work we can do in-house. So it's really nice to have those positions filled.
Okay, thank you. A couple things, Tom. So thank you for the work on salt. Are there permanent alternatives being developed that at, maybe at some point in the future, we wouldn't need to use salt at all? I know there's like a lot of work in the Adron docks going on because their, their streams are rarely impaired. I'm just.
Yeah. So over the years, there's been research on different things. I think what we need to be aware of in some of these alternatives is other water quality impacts. So you may hear of other products, like waste products from a brewery or something that folks are spreading on the roads. But that hits the stream, and that also has a negative effect. It kind of pulls the oxygen out. And I'm trying not to get too deep into this. But so far as left right now, it's been really reduction on salt and not other products. Because we haven't seen anything that we're comfortable with. And I think that'd be a national statement. But people have looked at that.
Okay. The ruts on, you know, I know that we just prepared on Swift, Dorset. What's the source of that? Is that like studded snow tires, heavy trucks? What, do you know why those roads develop ruts? And is there some, you know, thing that we can do to prevent those ruts?
So a lot of the ruts that are created are for two reasons, are ravelling. So the smaller particles in the asphalt get worn out over time. Or because the road structure underneath is perhaps insufficient, so it compacts. So if we're running more vehicles on a road than it would maybe designed for, or maybe a road, that piece of Spear Street, I'm not sure, sections of Spear Street, wherever engineering design, they were built up over time, right? So you get some pretty bad ruts there. So there's a couple of different strategies that we're trying to implement in our paving plan to address some of that. And the goal is always to get roads before they get to a really bad level. So a dollar spent when the roads are still in generally good condition, maybe level and overlay, like fill the ruts and then put an inch and a half pavement on, is a lot less expensive than digging up that entire road, rebuilding the base, and then coming back. So that is kind of the, the gist of our overall paving plan that we've been really working to develop over time. Because you don't always want to go to that worst road first, right? Because it's very expensive. You want to put your dollars where you can get your, all your roads up to that good level. And I do have some information I can show. It's similar to last year, actually, our PCR Pavement Condition Index. If that's something council wanted to see, and if we have time for, I could certainly put that back on the screen to refamiliarize you all with kind of where some of that lives or.
That'd be helpful.
And then just one unrelated question is, it's just noise on some of the South Burlington forums. And how does our kind of compensation structure for your staff compare to neighboring communities?
So I, I went backwards on our staff here. So the bottom three divisions, stormwater, wastewater, drinking water, those are enterprise funds. So those are paid for different, those are paid by our rate payer, it's our stormwater, wastewater and drinking water fees. Are we talking the relative, like, hourly salary?
Yeah.
That would be a question we'll get into during negotiation and things of that nature. I mean, I have seen some municipalities paying some pretty high salaries for entry-level highway folks, smaller municipalities, because they need somebody. But I don't know if I want to get too deep into that today.
So as, as the council does, our ASME contract is expiring the end of this fiscal year. So we will be entering those negotiations in the next couple, in the next month or so. On your January 6th council meeting is an executive session to talk about that.
Okay.
We do have some of that data. We also know what our hard-to-fill positions are and how we are not competitive at some of the, some of the levels.
Tom, I had two quick questions. Does the paving schedule include sidewalks as well as roads?
So the paving budget is just for roads, pavement, and then we've got separate line items that we increased a few years back to address sidewalks. And I'll just remind council, so we've got the data coming in preliminary fashion, as recently as this morning, about the sidewalk additions and the shared use path. So once we've got that, we can start putting a plan together and come back with, you know, here's the level of need out there. Here's the estimated cost. Here's what we have. And we can really do some math and figure out how we want to attack that. I don't have that today, because it's something we didn't solve.
Are you anticipating that that information could be available to the public the way the paving plan is?
Absolutely. In, in better fashion, I would hope. We'll have some nicer software that came along with that work.
Yeah.
Navigate the new software for paving.
I sat briefly with the SBB Government Affairs Group and one request they had, if it's possible, is in those paving and then the sidewalk repair plans at some point to assign a date or either by quarter or whatever might be possible. And I don't even know if it is possible, but I thought I'd pass that on. And then the last question I had is on the ash tree removal, is that also publicly available? Knowing where the, where the schedule of trees are that are to be removed and when?
Yes. So that is worked on by our arborist, and he has some assistance from our water resources engineer just to help bid some of that removal work out. And they reach out to the kind of nearby property owners. I don't know, do you know if they posted anything online as far as schedule?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, that, that's something we can do.
I, I think there'd be some community interest in that. So I know some areas the community got, the trees were tagged maybe two or three years ago, and I don't know that anything happened yet or not. So there, I know I've gotten a few questions on that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. We do have a question from the public. It looks like Bob Britt would want to ask a question.
Very subtle.
So Bob Britt, and representing the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. Yeah, in light of the constraints that are on the budget this year, the committee got together and, and looked at the needs. And we know that there's needs for more shared use path and sidewalk maintenance. However, because of the constraints, we're basically focusing on one area, and that's striping. And we'd like to see 10,000 added to the striping budget beyond the 50,000 that's there. The 50,000 that's in the striping budget right now does not include the 10,000 of monies that the council of last January allocated out of fund balance. So there is, I do not see it as an increase in our striping budget with the 10,000 that was shown earlier. The funds for striping have had to come out of the maintenance budget in the last year, partially, so that we could get the striping that's being done, done. And as you know, some roads and many crosswalks still aren't painted on an annual basis. Now, the department, DPW, is doing an excellent job in switching gears as far as the paint and inlaid and grinding before they put in this paint. So they, they are using a polyurea inlaid paint now. Where, where they, there's two steps. Grind, grind before you put the strip in so that the car tires don't, or vehicle tires don't scrape off the paint as quickly or wear off the paint. So what we're thinking is that if the city were to spend the extra 10,000 this year allocated from paving wherever is best, then this, the DPW can get more of the crosswalks painted because they do not have the equipment for the new polaria paint. So they could. So um they could uh use that uh funds to get that done. And then instead of painting every year, the crosswalks with water based paint. They could get more done by an outside contractor. Um, they estimate that um. Uh, we could get fifty crosswalks done uh with this new paint and grinding. Um, which then has a life of three years instead of one year. And uh therefore, um, we wouldn't have to see increases in striping going forward. So it's it's uh something, the um. Yeah, and uh whether whether it's sidewalks or fogline striping. That's done with this new paint, um, you know, it it will allow the city to catch up. And uh make sure that all roads similar to what's happens in Burlington and Shelburne, that all roads. All foglines are painted when needed, um, and they do it annually. Just leave you with the the things that I've said in the past, and that is that the most cost effective. Safety thing that we can you do as a city for vulnerable users is striping. So it's invaluable. So so asking to go from really fifty to sixty, not forty to sixty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we will move on to the stormwater division. Um, so to mention a couple of successes in fiscal year twenty four. Uh, our stormwater staff continues to be very successful obtaining uh grant funding. Um, so we were awarded about one point seven million over five different grants. Uh, that split between some culvert projects and helping some of our neighborhoods deal with expired permits or these three acre state permits and. Kind of getting out from under some of those state regulations on help improve work quality in our community. Um, Kennedy Drive Pond Two, uh so if people were driving down Kennedy Drive, you would have seen it uh. Near Timber Lane or not Timber Lane, um.
West Twin Oaks.
West Twin Oaks, thank you. Um, so on the corner there, there's some good improvements that happened there. That project was constructed using a forty million dollar grant and some utility funds. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, um, with some of the rain and and flooding that happened, we were able to send our staff down to help some other communities. Uh, so we're very proud of the fact we were able to help them for a few days to help clean up after some storms. Um, not a lot of budget line item adjustments for stormwater. Uh, any big changes or just shifting around where we pay for things in the budget like software instead of being all stormwater other divisions paying in, it's kind of moved that around. Um, I will note um that our rate increase for this year is again uh fairly low. Uh, so only looking at a three percent proposed rate increase to bring our equivalent residential unit or ERU value up to seven dollars ninety two cents. So single family home would pay about eight dollars a month uh for stormwater. Um, and that reflects about a three dollar increase for a a single family homeowner in the city. Um, and as a reminder, council will need to uh pass a resolution um later in the process. To update all of our rates and fees for the enterprise funds, so stormwater, wastewater, drinking water. Not just the rate, sort of the the fees we charge for allocations and connection fees and things like that. So we'll be coming back to you with that info. Uh, today I'm just talking about the overall rate um going up by three percent here. Um, capital improvement plan, so we have about two point eight million dollars in there again. For some of our neighborhood stormwater treatment projects. Uh, as I mentioned in the last slide, a lot of this is compliance. Uh, with state federal regulations related to TMDLs and flow restoration plans. Um, and a variety of other acronyms I'd be happy to get into if people want to get into those in more detail. Um, but we are moving forward with some culvert work here. So uh we've been talking for a while about designing and replacing a undersized culvert on Bartlett Bay Road that resulted in some flooding. Uh, contributes to some extent to some flooding down there. Uh, so we are excited to be able to move forward with that. Um, and then years ago, there's four culverts in the Oak Creek Village Butler Farms neighborhood. We replaced two of them. Uh, some grant money was available. We designed all four. Um, we kind of held on to those plans in the Butler Farm side of that neighborhood, kind of the the more upstream side. Uh, so we're finally moving forward with that work. We have some grant monies that became available. Um, and so we're trying to to move those forward FY twenty six. Um, and I will say since the first two were replaced, we've seen a huge reduction in in kind of general flooding from some of our normal. Our more typical large storms, if you will, um, in that neighborhood, which is very good. Um, also related to culverts, uh, we are doing a culvert inventory. So we did this years ago on um. More of a watershed, not citywide basis, but we're doing this now. We're expanding that to reassess culverts in the city. Uh, for kind of sizing if they're sized enough, taking into account different storm events we're seeing, aquatic organism passage. So we'll have a real nice report here, uh, working with a consultant to kind of go and prioritize and make evaluation and and uh just. Basically figure out how we're going to manage all these culverts in the city.
How many do we have?
That's a good question. I don't have that number.
But you will.
Maybe I should edit my chart on the front, Council Barrett, because it's always going up too. Uh, and then so just just a note on the bottom, you know, the the money invested in stormwater infrastructure really does a lot to increase our resiliency. And our ability to withstand larger storm events that we're seeing. Um, some emerging issues, uh, so grant funding, um, with the timeline for various state. Permit requirements coming due, there's a lot more competition for grants. Um, with other changes as well, we're not as confident we'll see opportunities for as many grants for going forward. And they'll be more competitive. So, you know, I always like to show you that chart, show you all the money we brought in, like almost fifteen million dollars, I think it was. In the last uh just over a decade, um, that line may start to level out and that, you know, that's a little concerning. We've been very successful bringing that money into the community. Um, and then sort of another new thing uh is chloride impairment. So we have uh four streams in South Burlington. That are impaired due to chloride. Um, it is not. Completely clear what impact that'll have and the actions that'll be taken. That's something that Vermont DEC is still working on. Um, so we are still looking for some clarity on that, but it'll likely have some impacts. Uh, we've certainly been pushing for those impacts, not just to be on the municipality, because as we've talked about, we're. We're doing a good job driving down our chloride usage. Uh, we really need to make sure that folks in the community. Uh, especially our businesses are are also aware of this and kind of doing their part to help reduce the amount of salt that gets put down after a storm. So that'll be an interesting discussion for FY twenty six and beyond, um, as these new regulations come down.
Is the grant funding challenge likely because the state is going to focus more on the rural areas? And their ability to deal with future stormwater and flooding and culvert washouts? Is is that the the challenge?
I think there's a lot of different factors. That's certainly a priority may be given, right, to those sorts of projects. Um, who knows, federal dollars will come down. I just think the overall competitiveness of these, right? So. People didn't have to act. South Burlington has done a lot for stormwater over the last decade and a half or more. Um, other communities have been sort of waiting and seeing, but now the deadlines have come up. So everybody's looking for those dollars uh across other communities in the state as well. Um, so I I think the competitiveness and making sure that the money's getting spread out to folks um will contribute to that.
And those four streams, are they Potash, Potash, Potash and Bartlett or Potash Bartlett and I don't know the other?
Bartlett Centennial and I presume Anglesby would be the fourth one, which is primarily in Burlington. I don't think uh.
Yeah.
I don't think Monroe, which is primarily.
Thank you.
Um, quick question, Tom. Um, you had mentioned miles of owned um stormwater piping, I think. Does that imply there's some non-city owned stormwater pipes?
Very much so.
And how are those maintained and how are they monitored?
Those are managed by the the property owners, um, who are the folks that own those culverts and pipes, yeah. So on private roads, we don't maintain, you know, the drainage pipe or the culverts.
So the city has no engagement in monitoring or helping monitor those?
We we generally do not, no. I mean, in some cases where we've taken over the stormwater system, we'll take over easements on top of those. So that those become our responsibility, but in other cases, no, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I'll stop for questions, but I'm also realizing I'm probably way over on time already.
Do we have um metrics that let us know kind of the state of our stormwater infrastructure, like similar to the. PCI score for roads, so we kind of know. How we're doing and also how we are relative to other communities as we think about grant funding and, you know, CPI and budget.
Yeah, I think that immediately makes me think of asset management. And so certain assets, like I was talking about that culvert inventory, will have a good idea of condition. Um, we go out and do inspections on the treatment practices annually, so we have a good idea when something needs to be cleaned out or reconstructed or something like that. Um, we have. An idea, but not as solid an idea, a lot of the pipe in the city. So that requires a ton of effort to go out and assess and camera that pipe. Have a database where you can look at it. Um, and so that's all comes back to asset management. One of the things we're trying to do is really align all of that with paving. So if we know we're paving this road, let's make sure we know the condition of those pipes underneath. So that we can perhaps get to those pipes, deal with any deficiencies or maintenance issues ahead of paving, so that they don't crop up two years later. Any stormwater questions? I'm just gonna jump right into wastewater. Go faster. All right, go faster. FY twenty four successes. Um, so I just wanted to lead off our our facilities. Once again, our treatment facilities uh ended up with gold awards once again in FY twenty four. Uh, they do a great job at producing a high quality effluent. Um, and the chart on the right speaks directed phosphorus, so that's the pounds of phosphorus that's coming in and what leads the facility. Um, you can't even really see the bars on the on the the effluent side. Um, but just significant reduction there, which we're very proud of. Um, and we got some security grant dollars to help improve security at our pump station, two pump stations in the plants. Um, and we move forward on some large projects, specifically the Bartlet Bay upgrade. Um, and then some solids handling work, which adds a new clarifier and some other improvements to the airport parkway plant. Um, the FY twenty six budget.
We're putting the the turbine in the effluent, the the outflow. I know there was talk about like putting a turbine to capturing the energy. From the effluent from Bartlet Bay. Is that, is that going forward with the staff?
That is in the CIP, but not in FY twenty six, as I remember. I'd have to look to tell you the exact year. Um, so we're proposing two new staff in this enterprise fund, which will be uh paid for kind of with the rates, the. The wastewater rates. Uh, because we're redoing the facility, we currently have only one person down at the Bartlet Bay plant on a daily basis. So when that person is out sick or on vacation, we have to shift people over. Um, and we we obviously check in. But uh we we'd really like to have a second staff member there as we get into construction or reconstruction of the facility and then going forward. Um, with the new facility. Um, and then we would also like to have another person. On staff to deal with our collection system. So to do some of that asset management, we were just kind of talking about on the stormwater side. But really do regular evaluations of our pump stations, regular pipe cleaning, regular cleaning of pump station. Our highway division um is responsible for that work at the moment. But coming back to a previous question about, you know, what what can staff do if we have limited staff? You know, we can only do so much. So some of the things we have to put off a little longer perhaps would be something like the pump station cleaning. Um, so if we can shift that responsibility to the wastewater division, uh, they have a vector they can use to do that work on their own. Uh, that's a much better condition. I think we're gonna get much better, um, do a much better job on our maintenance.
Are the cameras at each each facility or or two in one facility?
Uh, both facilities and our two largest pump stations.
Okay, and 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 that, are those images available to anybody on any computer or phone if they want? No?
As a security concern there.
No, I mean, to to employees, to employees. Can you, can employees like remotely monitor those cameras?
Our wastewater superintendent can.
Okay.
And I don't, I I don't know how to do it personally, but you know, um, I think as needed.
Is it a site wide camera or inside one of the buildings or or pointed at?
Giving away all our security secrets, Tim.
No, I'm just. I worry about security at, you know, at 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 our facilities, right? You know, and you hear nationally how people have hacked into systems. Right, and disrupted water supplies or or, you know, wastewater supplies. So I just, I'm just asking about those details, whether those cameras are are useful enough. And do you need more, right?
Um, so I think it's great that we have them where we have them now. I'd certainly like more, but these obviously come with a cost, you know, both uh the data to. Send the video back and forth and install them. Um, it may be a thing we look to do more over time, but I will note there's not more cameras currently in the CIT. Or the budget for other facilities.
And some of these cameras are like twenty five dollars, right? And they just, they're on wifi and, you know, you can. You could put one in every room where you have, you know, equipment that you would want to be have eyes on if you can't. Have, you only have one person, you know, at that site.
Oh, yeah.
Or if they're not there. I mean, there's not somebody there twenty four hours a day, like at Bartlet Bay, is there?
No, there's not some of their twenty four hours a day, certainly. And the new plant's gonna have some much more sensors and automation, but it still takes people to maintain those sensors. And tell it what to do.
Yeah.
Um, and I'll just, our current camera system works on the same, the mission system that we have for monitoring flows when pumps turn on, shut off, how much they. So it's all sort of a package. It's the way we've approached this uh currently.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, the alum, uh alum is a chemical we add to help bind phosphorus. So that number has been rather high. Uh, chemical costs increased. During and post COVID, they seem to have leveled out, but our budget increased a little bit there just to meet kind of what we're actually spending. Um, or come closer to, I should say. Uh, we just combined a couple line items that were a little bit redundant. We had one line for repair, another for replacement for pumps. We just made it one. Um, you'll see some larger numbers, but that just really reflects the shift of where funding for managing the city's closed landfill is paid out of. Uh, our facilities division's taken over management of that and the permit. Um, and at the bottom here, I'll note our proposed rate increase for FY twenty six is eight point seven five percent. Um, and so you've seen a similar chart to this in the past. This is a comparison of annual fees for nearby or other communities where you can get the data. We updated this for the current year. Uh, you will see us over on the right side there, uh, around four hundred dollars a year. Uh, based on that amount of usage or discharge to our system. Um, so we're still very much on the lower end for the region.
Where where will we be next year? If if everybody else's rates stay the same?
I think we would be on the wastewater side, just above Milton if nobody changed or Colchester.
Okay.
And I think on the water side, when I get to that slide, I think we're still the lowest.
And the eight and three quarter percent is is partially due to the to the bonding for Bartlet Bay, right?
Yeah, yes, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
But a CIP, I'm gonna try to move faster here, uh, money in there again for Bartlet Bay plant, um, pump stations. And uh kind of refurbishing pump stations. And then we have some money in there. We have a line, a force main that breaks regularly on Commerce Avenue. Uh, and so we're trying to build up the funds necessary to replace that. That's sort of a two phase thing. Um, and this is kind of my first phase. Emerging issues, once again staffing, sort of differently here. We've got um some pending retirements of our most senior staff. Um, so we're going to have to come up with a succession plan there and do some hiring um in the this fiscal year into next. Uh, PFAS, I think you've heard me talk about PFAS and new regulations there. I won't spend too much time on that. Um, and just kind of the bidding of these large projects and uncertain bid climate. Uh, we don't know where bids are. We know there are some other municipal projects that are rather large, that are gonna go out around the same time. Uh, we're working very hard to have us go out before a lot of those and some federal BABA requirements um related to uh equipment acquisition are gonna be. Buy American, yep. So uh just, Bill American, buy American, yeah, sorry. I just say Baba.
Build America is what makes it really hard. The back is easier.
So this went from just like steel to all the equipment in there and all the components. So it it's a little more intense than it has been. And we're still figuring out what's that, that does to pricing for a lot of the equipment that we need in the wastewater plant.
Tom, the PFAS, that's what's spreading of the solid waste that's remains from the treatment.
PFAS is.
Reference here that the PFAS and the solid waste that is sometimes spread on fields, is that? Bullet two, is that what they're talking about?
PFAS is sort of a ubiquitous chemical.
No, 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 I know, but.
Firefighting foam through our process. Uh, it settles out and largely ends up in our settled solids.
Right.
Our bio solids.
Yeah.
Uh, for many years, we've been able to beneficially reuse those on fields.
Spread it, right.
Spread it. The concern there is accumulation of those materials. Uh, we've been doing some testing, yeah.
There was um just an article, maybe it was in the Times, did you see that? The farmers in Texas been using the bio solids and like. Fields are destroyed, like all their cattle are dying and so it is actually a a a real serious issue. What's the alternative for spreading?
Landfill, landfill. And that's not, and then trucking it across the country, perhaps.
Yeah.
Or incineration. We don't have any incinerators in Vermont.
But that is a serious issue.
Uh, very much so.
Yeah.
And it's it's sort of been a bullet again for years. Um, and we're still waiting to see how the state of Vermont and the federal government are gonna ultimately address this. I will note, you know, some of these worst case scenarios where you hear about these fields being destroyed, we don't have that level of PFAS. We don't have those type of dischargers. In our community, generally speaking, we did.
But it does builds up over time.
They do build up over time, but we have fairly, the levels we're talking about are much different. Um, in those situations versus what's happening in South Burlington.
That's Texas. They do everything big there.
Uh, any other wastewater questions or I'll I'll try to run through drinking water quickly? Okay. Uh, so a couple. Uh, so a couple successes for FY twenty four on the drinking water side. Uh, we continue to work on our lead service line inventory. Ultimately, there's gonna be a lot of work to identify the material type and then remove any lead service lines. Uh, continued conversion of all water meters to the Neptune radio read system. Um, that's been going very well. We think we've done a fifty three meters or so that aren't radio read in the city. Uh, but that program also, uh, replaces older meters. Um, and then quite a bit of maintenance got done in FY twenty four. Uh, and we found some pretty good leaks and we continue to find some good leaks in our aging system. So that's really good. We'll talk about that more in a second. Um, budget line item changes.
How much lead do we have in our pipes? Have we identified any?
I'll, I'll. Get that one earlier, yeah. Um, so we, we've proposed increase to the, uh, system maintenance line item by ten thousand, just actual costs we've been seeing recently as our system ages. As we feel we need to start increasing the numbers there, uh, same professional services, trying to be a little more proactive. Replacing valves before they go bad, kind of a thing, or older pipe. Um, we are, so we buy our water from the Champlain Water District. Um, and the majority of our expenditures go towards water purchase. So when now that cost of water goes up, that has a direct impact on our budget. Uh, we've assumed that it would be about five percent increase in the cost to purchase water from CWD. Uh, they haven't finalized that on their side yet. We kind of go first. So it's a little awkward for this process, but that's our assumption that's in there right now.
They're paying more for water from Lake Champlain, is that what they're doing?
To treat, manage, yeah. Um, and then so our proposed drinking rate increase for FY twenty six is, uh, eight point eight percent. Uh, here's our chart again, um. Again, we're, we're solidly on the right for this fiscal year. Presumably, everybody on this chart's gonna have a rate increase. I would expect us, even with an eight per eight percent, be relative to others, uh, one of the least expensive in the area. All right, CIP, uh. New storage tank, like I said, that's going out to bid now. Obviously, you'll see costs for that. Continued investment in meter upgrades. I mentioned already, we have only fifty three meters that are not radio read compatible. Um, but that line also covers replacing our older meters, kind of thing, over time, uh, you wanna replace all those. Uh, we have an issue ground on Brewer Parkway where an older pipe is tuberculated, so it's sort of corroded and it's making the diameter smaller impacting flow. We are trying to put out, uh, engineering bid, so we can actually replace about five hundred feet of that pipe as soon as possible, uh, in FY twenty six. Um, and then again, going back to this asset management thing, this study, uh, this is sort of a piece of that, really helping us do a hydraulic and infrastructure assessment study. Uh, that's something that's been in the CIP out a couple of years. Uh, I'm personally excited that it's coming up in FY twenty six and we'll have the funding to, to move forward with that. That really helps in our planning processes. Emerging issues, uh, water breaks. We've seen a lot more water breaks recently than we have, um, generally speaking in the past. So we spent a lot of time on that. Uh, relative to that, water loss in our system has increased to about twenty four percent. Uh, we'd like that number to be in the fourteen percent range. That's generally an average acceptable level, fourteen to sixteen percent. Um, you know, since it was at twenty four percent, uh, we've actually found a couple more leaks and repaired those. You may have seen one on Dorset, for example. So work's being done there. I'm, um, optimistic, we'll be driving that number down next time. We have some numbers to report there, but that is certainly an emerging issue as our system ages. Uh, to Counselor Atomic's question, so we've identified zero lead lines. But there's also a large unknown pipe component. So this first phase is really a paper exercise to go through records. So on the customer side of the curb stop, there's about five hundred twenty six lines that are an unknown pipe material. Um, and then on our side, uh, off the mains, uh, there's about twenty five hundred. So the next phase here is to figure out, phase two work, we're gonna be doing is, well, what are those lines? Uh, there's a variety of strategies that we can use. Don't have time to talk about that today, but it does include digging it up and looking at it, um, if necessary, and that's not off the table. So that work.
What's your stance, Tom, though? Is it likely to find lead or unlikely?
We do not feel that we have. Lead, significant number of lead pipes in the community. We've found none. There's no reason for us to be overly suspicious. But it's a, it's a requirement from federal government passed down, so we're complying with that as quickly and efficiently as we can.
But, but the chemistry in the water, right, uh, lines creates a, you know, a liner on those lead pipes, so there is very. Low risk, right?
It was low risk. And if we were gonna get into a water chemistry discussion, I would pull in other individuals on my team, um, to help with that. Yeah.
Any other questions? Is there new technology to help you find these, uh, water leaks?
There's a variety of, yeah, um, satellite images we use, different technologies can attach to the pipe. Different pipe types are easier than others to detect leaks on. I think it was the older concrete pipes are not as easy. Don't wait too long.
I have two minutes for three divisions.
I got one quick.
You guys are doing great. Take the time you need. We will figure it out.
Question.
Sure.
Um, it's a little off topic, not a lot, but chloramine versus chlorine for, uh. Our water system. I know that Champlain water handles that, but is chloramine more expensive, less expensive than chlorine treatment? Do you know? And is there any? Conversation about moving away from chloramine? There's been a lot of new reporting about. Detrimental effects of it, and I just wanted to find out if that's something that's being talked about or looked into.
Yes, so nothing of that nature is included in this budget, certainly. Um, and I think that's, that's a large topic. And I think if there's concern about that, we should certainly get the Champlain Water District staff in here to talk about it. Um. I'm not necessarily proposing, I don't think they're discussing switching, uh, their disinfection practices at the moment.
Give a quick question, more macro on the budget. You know, very impressive what you're doing in terms of, uh, of all the maintenance and, 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 and standards that you've maintained. And yet coming in at the, you know, lower end of the scale, if not the lowest end of the scale in terms of pricing. I was just curious in, in terms of trying to, to leverage that. I mean, is South Burlington in many ways sounds like a best practice of, of how to approach these issues. Is there any opportunity for economies of scale of working with other communities? As sort of a rollout of what you're doing. I mean, it, it just seems like what you're doing is so impressive. There would be interest in, in emulating it, or is there something unique to South Burlington that allows you to do such a remarkable job?
Uh, I think we've got some very good staff. So we've got forty four employees, which is a lot relative to our other. Departments and divisions, um, but then you go look at some other communities of our size and they have a lot. More additional staff, right? So I think we're able to do a, a lot of work because of the folks we have on board here. Um, we have done some regionalization on the stormwater side a little bit with Shelburne. Uh, obviously on the, the drinking water side with the Champlain Water District. Um, our wastewater system is a little more confined to us, not necessarily lend itself to that. Uh, we do take some wastewater from Colchester though, and so we, we do receive a payment, yeah, from, from Colchester. Um, it really depends on the issue or topic, you know, we, we've talked a little bit in the past about the line striping thing. What if we all put out to bid together? Does that get more done, you know? And that's a thing, um, that we've kicked around a little bit.
So again, it's just amazing what you've done and obviously always looking for economies of scales to continue to, to keep these great services at an affordable price.
Thanks.
Can I have your computer to click through? All right, thank you, everyone. Erica Quallen, Deputy Director of Capital Projects, and I'm going to take you through our last three divisions here at DPW. Starting with facilities formerly known as Physical Plant and located at City Hall. But in the last year has come over to DPW and wrapped up as a division of DPW. And so with that change, you will see some kind of restructuring in the budget. It has not been a department or a division for very long. So we're starting to really work the kinks out there and figuring out what is needed. So in FY twenty four, like I said, came over to DPW, um, are following kind of the structure that we have at DPW. Using a, uh, superintendent to manage a lot of the day-to-day and, um, projects going on there. And another thing we really got into is the Government Operations Climate Action Implementation Plan. Along that lines, one of the bigger projects that happened is three of our older HVAC units at DPW are now three new heat pump units. And the next two are, uh, planned to switch over in the next year to the same kind of model. Over here, this is just our solar panel, uh, production from City Hall. Uh, over the, from FY twenty two, twenty three and twenty four, twenty four is in green. Uh, we, we did have a sunnier year in twenty three, but overall, uh, things, we've been producing quite a bit of energy there. Um, I looked at the savings that this equates to, and that number is. Not in my head anymore.
Hey Erica, is there a lot of clipping for the solar? Cause I know we're behind the meter and we don't have batteries. Do you know how much of this energy is actually used or is it clipped?
I'm not sure. Um.
And one, one reason I ask that, I would just, uh, I'll make this quick, um. I happened to be at Beta the other day and they were talking about how they often have, um, batteries that are not quite. Up to snuff their planes, but great for storage.
Mm-hmm.
That sell really cheap. Right? And so I know at one point we looked at battery storage, but then, you know, there might be like recycled batteries out there now.
Yeah.
That would make it really efficient to have battery storage if there's a fair amount of clipping.
Right. That's a great point. Yeah. Oh, I can definitely dig into that, um, have not at this point. So in FY twenty six, this looks like a lot of changes, but it really just wraps up to, uh, an increase of less than a percent from FY twenty five. Things got moved around a lot, um, ADA compliance and repairs has been coming up more and more. We've noticed. Um, some of the ADA buttons on the, this building in the back were, had failed, so replacing that. Um, a few others of our entryway at DPW is very much not accessible. So making sure we have some money to continually address those issues. The safety committee has been, uh, revived a bit recently and doing a, a lot of new work there. So like, uh, we have a budget for the wellness committee, building that in for safety. Same thing with travel and training. Now it's a division. We're wanting to focus on that. Um, and like Tom mentioned, these last two are, uh, budget lines that used to live elsewhere and they were just kind of floating. Uh, but now this felt like the right place for them to land. Um, and we are not doing less cleaning. We just had over budgeted the past few years and are learning what we actually need. Um, and so some of these are just, um, lessons learned over the past few years of this department and division's existence. So really, uh, Tony and what that should look like. In the CIP, a lot of this is focused on climate action and energy efficiency upgrades. So our really biggest projects here, um, are three of are directly energy efficiency. Fire Station One is gonna be the next building to get EV charging stations. DPW is getting, uh. Theirs as part of the, uh, Garage Bay and Expansion Project, uh, coming soon. So Station One is next, doing weatherization at Wheeler House, a continuation of this year's work. Uh, and the replacement of the older boilers at Police Station, again, the ADA upgrades. And then, um, just continuing with other scheduled replacements as needed. Uh, in facilities, the emerging issues, um, continuing to implement the Climate Action Plan. We, a lot of times these involve higher upfront costs, as you know, because of the, um, ARBA allocation last year. And looking at what some of those above and beyond costs are. And we're still learning what the payback period is for some of these things. Uh, some are more easy to calculate than others. And we're gonna do some learning and ask behavior changes. Uh, and currently we contract out with a lot of vendors. This also speaks to what Counselor Scanlon was asking. And so we want to streamline this division and figure out how we can do some more in-house. Maybe that means in a future year, hiring another, um, staff person as a technician. We're not sure yet, but finding ways to really simplify and do things in, uh, a proactive way and re, rather than a reactive way. And do whatever we can in-house. Rather than having to contract everything out. Any facilities questions there? Great, okay. Moving into bicycle and pedestrian, this is primarily penny for paths, but not entirely. The budget lines are, um, within the highway, the streets and highway ones, as Tom had talked about. So this is focusing more on penny for paths, funding and projects. So FY twenty four successes, uh, very large grant funding coming in from the state here. Uh, over three quarters of a million dollars there to replace that sidewalk on Haysburg Road from Williston to Kennedy. Uh, that was spoken about earlier to create a ten foot wide path rather than a five foot wide. Very poorly conditioned sidewalk.
What's the ETA?
That's a great question. Uh, FHWA Federal Highway Administration actually hasn't fully released the funds. Usually these are, um. Pretty quick, within five to six months of the grant award, we're usually soliciting our consultants for that. Uh, it has been a year and I, I email the V-Trans project manager once a month saying, have the funds been released yet? Uh, the answer is still no.
So that's a constraint, once we get the funds, we're, we're on it?
Um, we'll, we'll move into design, but yes. Um, some homeowners there actually really helped us recently. I noticed some very large trees that probably would have had to come down, got taken down by homeowners. So thank you to whoever you are.
Can you, can you guesstimate on the timeframe? I mean, once the money comes, it would ostensibly take no more than X.
Um. Three to four years usually, um. Two and a half fish years of design and right of way. Right of way is always the one that you, you really don't know. Sometimes it takes six months, sometimes it takes sixteen months. So, um, that is the part that is uncertain. And construction, it would probably be one long construction season. I'd probably use all of the construction season.
Optimistically, we really are talking two thousand twenty eight, twenty nine, maybe, so.
Yeah, likely. Um, I would say FY twenty nine, whether that means twenty twenty eight or twenty twenty nine, we'll see.
Is releasing those funds assured at this point, or is it in jeopardy with the new administration coming in? Do you know?
Um, it is obligated to us, so that is, it is not in jeopardy. And this is one of the funding programs that V-Trans has been doing. For as long as they've funded bike ped projects and they continue to. So that is a grant source I don't foresee issues with. And then, uh, a big thing that we did this year, we talked about, uh, the crosswalks restriping going into the more durable material. While it was expensive, we got eighty seven crosswalks done within a half a mile of all schools. And then our larger roads, what we refer to as our big three, Williston, Dorset and Kennedy, even if they weren't within a half a mile. We still striped those larger, high volume, high speed roads. Um, so that was very exciting.
So because this is a budget discussion, do you agree with Bob on, do, do we need more money for striping? What, what's your perspective on the striping budget relative to the need?
We could certainly spend it. I will say that, especially as we try to build out the more durable material.
Is ten thousand enough then? I mean, what's, what, what, what do we need to have? You know, an adequate striping budget?
Uh, I don't know if I could give what would be totally adequate. We're at a point right now where we're building out. Uh, this more durable material and getting into a cycle. Uh, we had originally in the on-off spreadsheet, had an additional thirty thousand there. Um, I, that thirty thousand, we would also be able to spend, uh, consistently. Uh, so, uh, the Active Transportation Plan has been going on this year. Yeah, as part of the Transportation Sector Climate Action Implementation Plan. Uh, and that will be coming to you, the draft report will be coming to you on February third, uh, to have a discussion there. And the last thing is just kind of like my little data nerd, we got a fancy new counter, uh, for bicycle pedestrians. So similar to the tubes we put on roads for vehicles, we got one for specifically bicycles and pedestrians. Uh, so the budget, this is just the penny for paths balance here. Uh, looking back from FY twenty one, it did start before this. Um, that's kind of the first year I'm showing here for the sake of a simpler. Uh, presentation and anticipated spending in FY twenty six is about four hundred thousand dollars. That's because some of our larger projects are expected to go to construction. So, uh, that's why there's a bit of a jump from twenty five to twenty six there. But it still leaves a pretty hefty balance of six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, a lot of that is the revenue you can see since FY twenty one has gone up a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that one cent. Really because of our grand list group, uh, it's still just a penny. Uh, so that is continuing and penny for paths is going to be ending from the original ballot item. In FY twenty nine, uh, and so I started doing some planning for how we can, um. Phase out of that budget. So if you look out of the fut, if you look at the future years of the CIP. You'll see that some things are starting to move over to general fund to show what the impacts of that would be in future years.
Just couldn't remind me, Erica, we, um, permitted.
Just couldn't remind me, Erica, we um permitted to use Penny for Path for maintenance, or is it dedicated for new infrastructure?
New infrastructure.
Okay.
Uh yeah, that was part of the ballot language uh in that August twenty eighteen ballot.
So what what would be the decision-making process for that balance of six?
Um so that I've started laying out and it is presented in the current CIP, if you look over the future years, based on different priorities uh we've heard from. Uh but the fund, I believe, wouldn't go away at the end of that ten-year period. But we would no longer be collecting revenue. Jesse or Martha, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Council approves any allocation from that fund.
Um yeah, so I'm showing you what I recommend you spend that balance on, but um yes, it is ultimately up to you here.
And are are we considering uh a ballot item to continue the Penny for Paths going forward, or are we just gonna sunset it in twenty-nine?
It's probably for future council, but uh sounds like a good idea.
Uh so a lot of our the CIP are ongoing projects for the Bicycle Pedestrian Network. The Sidewalk Assessment and Improvement Program, uh we don't usually have any general funds shown in the bike ped section, but that came out of highway. It really just made more sense for it to live in this one. So that's why there's suddenly general fund spending uh in a area that there historically wasn't. Like I said, some big things going to uh construction and there's some estimated dates here. Some Heinsberg Road, I was being optimistic and put twenty-seven, twenty-eight, assuming that we could like really get going still in FY twenty-five. Um granted, this was the first pass was a month ago or so now. But two new ones is the Dorset Street and Songbird Road Crosswalk, which has uh come up. It's been scoped. So looking to get going on that one in FY twenty-six, uh that should be a relatively quick project. Uh and then you will be seeing a grant request form on Monday for uh some sidewalk segments on Williston Road to close some gaps there um and make a pretty important connection.
So I'm gonna sound a little bit like a broken record here, but um I know we don't have results from the sidewalk assessment yet, but I'm suspecting that there's gonna be, um it's gonna show that we need a lot of work. I mean, you just have to walk up Dorset Street and, right? I mean, you see how bad the sidewalk is, the one that's, you know, half asphalt and half sidewalk. And so um I I would like us to anticipate that and build up the capital improvement plan, um knowing that there is going to be a lot of sidewalk maintenance that we're gonna have to do.
Yeah.
Do you have all the easements now for Dorset Street, Shergis Path?
No, we do not.
No idea? What?
No, we do not.
You do not? You're but you're close, you're?
Uh I have not gotten another since the last one you've accepted. We're in pretty active conversations with a lot of the property owners. Um I believe you will have one or two more in front of you within the next month.
Okay.
Um I'm not sure about others. Those are ongoing conversations still.
But that could delay the construction for FY twenty-six?
Yes.
If we don't.
We, the, as long as the, if the design stays the same through this right-of-way process, we have begun kind of permitting investigations, getting it ready for all of the final steps following right-of-way. Uh and we could get it to contract plans through permitting relatively quickly. But yes, it is very much dependent on uh making it through these remaining parcels.
I have a question on the uh you're confident in the grant funding for the Wilshen Road to Heinsberg or Kennedy?
Yes.
On Heinsberg. Um and one of the first steps is engineering, is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a way to use reserves to sort of accelerate that part of the project? And I don't know what the delay would be, but basically back up the reserves once the grant is funded?
Yes, so it is tricky because the grant funds both design and construction. Uh and we have to go through consultant procurement using the Vtrans process because we're using Vtrans money. And we would use staff time without using that as a part of our in-kind of it, as an in-kind match. But Vtrans, their staff cannot allocate time towards things like reviewing the request for proposal and reviewing our consultant selection. Uh so we, we've had the request for proposals drafted um and gone through our uh consultant selection forms and all of the process that they need. So as soon as it is ready, we say, here's the RFP, please review it. But yes, um so they can't put any time towards that.
It's not necessarily a cash flow issue as much as a allocation of staff time.
Yeah, that one's, I've been emailing, yeah, the PM monthly. So I will let you know as soon as it comes through. So like we've talked about, the city inventory of sidewalks and paths and ramps uh has all been completed. We, I got an email at eight twenty-five this morning as I was opening my computer here uh that we're uh able to view more of the data. Um have not had time to get into it, let alone assess it and look at costs. But we have gotten the ramp data um and have started looking at that. Though a lot of what happened out there was looking at, some of these are looking nice. They're compliant, they meet the slopes. Some are in pretty rough shape um and everything in between. So um like Councillor Chalmers said, really being able to plan for that. Because it will illuminate new costs that need to be spent. And uh we're working hard to shift traffic into these non-vehicular, non-motorized modes. Uh and so projects, we need to make these connections as fast as we can. Uh and so ha- having a conversation around when grants are appropriate and maybe when some of that Penny for Paths balance uh should be used without grants, it might give us the opportunity to do things faster on certain projects.
See, one thing, um um I just wanted to remind council, uh you do not yet have a request from the Safe Roots to School Task Force you created. Uh that will be forthcoming at a meeting coming up next week, I think is my hope, and we're gonna make that decision. I understand it's a little later in your process. Uh I'd like to remind you that that will be coming as well.
And that will very much fall into this uh purview here. Any other questions on bicycle and pedestrian? Okay, this, last but not least, open space is our final uh division here to talk through. FY twenty-four slash FY twenty-five successes here. So uh the Hubbard path with the updated design that we had worked through last summer got uh DRB approval and is continuing forward into contract plans. And that should go, that is going to go to construction next summer, fall. Uh so very exciting, the permanent conservation easement on Wheeler Nature Park. A lot of the work happened uh to get ready for this closing in FY twenty-four, so we still put it here, uh even though the closing happened in FY twenty-five. Uh but that was great. And then the Parks and Open Space Master Plans uh are underway now. So that will really help us plan for the future. You'll see a kind of light presentation and open space right here because we're gonna be waiting on uh those results and recommendations.
Is the target completion date for a master plan still sort of November twenty, end of twenty twenty-five?
End of twenty twenty-five, yeah. Um and it is currently laid out so that a lot of the upfront work happens jointly between parks and open space. And then there will be uh the kind of effort will be a bit split between some of the more active recreation in our parks and some of the more passive, open space type recommendations. So um that will happen in the second half. Uh and it's currently scheduled that Parks will um be the first part two taken on. So that would be part two A and Open Space would be part two B. Some of that will be uh done concurrently, but to make sure that they are each getting their own individualized attention and understanding the different types of needs out of both of those types of amenities. So FY twenty-six budget, again like Penny for Paths, since it's a special fund, breaking it out as just the fund balance, the uh this is just the half cent that is related to parks improvements uh and maintenance here. This does not include the land acquisition half cent that is shown here.
Do you have the balance on the land acquisition piece, the fund balance?
Martha can probably look that up while Erica's finishing.
I did look it up while putting this together because I had to make sure the numbers matched. Um but so this is based primarily out of the one point one-two-five million dollar bond uh that was approved uh or loan that was approved in twenty sixteen. And that um loan payment is actually, the note repayment is completed in FY twenty-six. That's our last note repayment.
So just to be clear, the the close two million dollar balance here is just for park maintenance?
Uh not maintenance. Uh the, there is a s- five percent of the fund can go towards maintenance and we use that, a part of that also to fund our parks maintenance staff.
The million dollars here, then it's for what?
So that is out of the Open Space and Natural Area Enhancement Plan recommendations, many of which we are completed with. A lot of them were around the trailwork in Wheeler.
It's for parks improvements and specific parks.
Yes. Um and specific projects were also designated in that enhancement plan.
And and so, uh again, maybe you just said this, are there projects that we have in mind to utilize that balance, or is this like?
That would be a conversation if the council wanted to have that conversation. The twenty sixteen list that was approved for this funding. Um I don't know if it anticipated this much growth in the grand list, so revenue really increased.
We need, if let let's, you know, um if if we say concluded that um this balance was better spent somewhere else, would that be a ballot item?
It, it really depends what the somewhere else would be. Um we can bring you, we should have an intentional conversation about that at a future meeting.
Is our our improvements like Hubbard in this balance?
Um, part of the path is coming out of that. That is primarily a penny for paths because it is uh the path network. This has included things like uh the Red Rocks Trail Improvements, uh and that's one of the remaining projects here. Um a lot of the trail improvements and the treehouse at Wheeler were included here.
So just to throw something out, so we've talked a lot about uh city center green park, um one thing to think about is whether this, if we were to purchase and improve a park.
So my understanding of the ballot item, but looking at Colin and Erica here, is that the specific parts to be approved were named in the maintenance plan. So if there was a new, a new aligned project within those parks, it could likely be used, but I a city green was not named in ballot. It it could be included in a future ballot item.
There is a succession of ballot items uh that are are on the website, but the creation, the um taking out of the loan and what's known as the OSNAP list, the Open Space and Natural Area Enhancement Plan that identified the specific projects. So looking at the capital improvement plan as we anticipate um Hubbard to be primarily spent out in as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, land acquis- I feel like I've been courted. I just got a note from my attorney. That was exciting. Uh without having to be in court. Thank you to whomever. I don't know this handwriting. Um as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the land acquisition balance was five hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Add to that evidence.
I submit it as an exhibit. Um so in the capital improvement plan, a lot of things are planned to be wrapped up in FY twenty-five. Uh the money has already been allocated towards it, so some of it might be spent in FY twenty-six. But it was all approved as part of that last capital improvement plan. Uh so continuing our tree management project, so this is that five percent, um a chunk of that five percent that can be used towards maintenance. Uh and the new add on here is cost sharing with Recreation and Parks. When digging through that OSNAP, because I realized we were really reaching the end of the list of projects that were eligible. The upgrade of the Red Rocks Bath House was on there based on an accessibility study that was done a few years back. And so the cost estimate that came from that study for some of the smaller improvements uh will be going towards this renovation um at Red Rocks.
A merging bath house then be open sometime?
Uh it will be. I think we're gonna have to really just rebuild it. It is not very much a renovation project anymore. I think we could probably call it a reconstruction.
I was just wondering why we're putting money into it if it's not usable.
Yeah, so the twenty-five thousand is just a piece of it. Um I'm sure Adam will show more of that. Uh that covers the bulk of that cost. But this was based on the, again, the approved list of what could go towards it. So emerging issues, things we're gonna really think about um that our makeup of housing of where our residents live is shifting. A lot of people don't have access to yards or a park may not be right next door. So making sure that all people, regardless of uh the type of housing they live in or any other situation, have access to these open space and natural areas and recreation options. Uh and the Open Space and Parks Master Plans, I think, will really help us um achieve that vision and figure out how to do it best. And then um coming out of that project, the master planning efforts, um I think there will be a lot of those larger conversations around how to use this fund next, moving forward.
Could I maybe suggest we add to this, we're talking about improvements to open space, but management, and we've talked about this a little before, like um you know, um planting trees, controlling invasives. When do we mow, when we don't not mow, where do we mow, and just a a plan around that for our various open spaces.
Yeah, uh I'm not sure when the conversation started. I think it might have been before I started in twenty twenty-two. That one I started? Yes. Um but uh we have started going back and reviewing what uh which of our natural areas and open spaces have management plans and which don't. A few of them are relatively new, a few of them are old or don't exist. So uh yeah, um I would be happy to if council chooses to have that conversation about planning for more management. I will be here to have that conversation. And that wraps up DPW.
So we are about a half an hour behind, uh but but that is not a criticism. Public Works is half of our, half of our city budget, so it's important for you guys to spend some time with it. I do think we should take a quick break and then uh allow Jennifer and Adam to set up.
Thank you very much. Always a pleasure.
Okay, so this is gonna be a joint presentation, uh Recreation and Parks and the Library. It's gonna lead off into one slide, which we'll both kind of touch base on. Then we'll discuss Recreation and Parks, then we'll rotate over to the Library and then we'll finish up with the a joint slide as well. Uh so the first one here kind of talks about uh overall successes between the the two departments. Uh and the graphs kind of highlight how we're providing more services to our residents. I'll jump into kind of more details on the Recreation graph that displayed here. Um but as you can see, over the last year, our community events uh have tripled and our community programming has not quite doubled, um but jumped up from thirty-six to sixty-seven. And I'll kind of highlight uh a little bit later kind of what made up uh those jumps. Mainly, the the programming was looking at new programs that are engaging different populations. Uh so a lot of that jump of thirty-one is made up of adult programming. Uh not so heavy on the the youth side of things.
The library slide is showing the change from twenty nineteen, which was the full year before COVID. So statistics that I refer back to when I'm trying to compare to FY twenty-four. And uh it shows an increase in uh program attendance, a big increase in checkouts. Uh and the visitor comparison is probably a little off the first year that we moved in. We had about nine months where the people counter wasn't working and we were having to do estimates and guesses. Um so I suspect that that's actually higher. Uh and I want to just mention a couple of things. So when you look at computer use, that's the, that's the place where we're coming out less than we used to be. And that counts number of sessions. So it's not number of people, but there are increments that people can use the computer on an hour at a time. And so each one of those, each hour is considered a session. Uh we think that that is in part because when we were in the mall, we saw a lot of people who would not normally come to a library and they specifically came to use the computers. Those computers were very highly used. And then also during COVID, uh a lot of people enhanced their home computer abilities because they were trying to work from home. And so we aren't seeing uh quite as many, quite as much use in twenty twenty-four as we were. as we were before. Uh, I also did not include here, but I want to mention that when you look at the number of checkouts in twenty twenty-four, uh, that is, uh, a number that goes against the, uh, commonly heard things about we don't need libraries anymore. Nobody's using them, just saying. Uh, and that are, the number of items that we have in the library to check out uh, was forty-four thousand in the mall and is sixty-one thousand in the new building. So that includes the library of things and the AV, the books, um, museum passes. But so that's, that's the number of items that we circulate, physical items, not including audio and e-audio.
One thing that's not measured here is the, um, number of visitors to City Hall connections to the wifi, which is probably a really big service for a lot of people because everybody's got a phone, right? So they can, they, they don't need to go to a computer station. So the question for, for Nick is, is there a way to get a measurement out of unique uh, address connections per day to the public wifi?
Uh, yeah, we can, we can, we can monitor the number of active connections. It would be maybe a bit difficult to see who is like a staff person and who is a public person.
Okay.
Um, but we could get some of that information. I know yesterday we just happened to be looking and there was a hundred and forty users on the guest wifi specifically. Um, we do have a net, a separate network for staff computers and staff devices, but that probably translates to maybe a hundred and twenty or so actual guests at that one moment when you, when we looked.
Right.
Um, and just an interesting stat, cause I was talking to John, our network manager yesterday. The day that had the most usage wasn't the eclipse. It wasn't a snowstorm. It was when we, we had a heat wave, uh, last summer and the library was totally packed. So that's something that we can collect data on.
Boy, our new data person might want to look at that, right? Thank you.
Uh, jumping into the recreation and parks here, uh, we're small enough staff, so I'll be able to kind of highlight everyone on the, the team. Uh, so I started up, uh, November of last year. Rebecca, uh, handles our senior center programming. Uh, so the senior centers open eight thirty to four o'clock with programming in there as well as our senior events, uh, like the holiday dinner tomorrow, as well as the light tour, uh, next Tuesday. Travis, uh, has been here since twenty sixteen. His positions, uh, adjusted a little bit. Um, so most recently he's transitioned into the rec specialist focusing in on our programming and events. Uh, Brett Leonard, uh, was previously prior to the rec department, uh, with the, the school district. He also, uh, is on the, uh, programming and event side, uh, which is the, the focus of everybody. Uh, and then, uh, Kate, uh, started up with us, uh, March of last year, uh, and Olivia, uh, most recently in the, the summer, kind of more on a, a part-time basis. Uh, again, uh, focusing on expanding those, uh, programming needs as well as all of the, the events that we've been doing. On the successes, I'll kind of highlight a, a few of them here. Um, as the, the council might remember, uh, in the, the spring timeframe with Bill C. Field and the, uh, softball league, there were some issues, uh, with that field. So, uh, between recreation, public works and the, the little league itself, uh, that field was renovated. Um, and it's now something where previously, uh, they were actually not scheduling home games there. Uh, now they're looking for additional, uh, time on that field. Um, so it's been a, a success there. At cross departments, um, we've worked, uh, with public works, um, to actually kind of adjust, uh, the way some of the maintenance is handled. Previously, there was some kind of split maintenance when it came to the, the facilities. Uh, so we've worked with them, transitioned, uh, some resources and, and staff over. So they're handling that, which then in turn allows us to solely focus on getting out into the, the community. Additionally, uh, things we've done with the, the library this year, working with, uh, them hand in hand when it came to Juneteenth. Um, we've partnered with them at our rec on the goes, as well as most recently, not this quarter twenty-four, but our community dinners, uh, we're working with the, the library on those as well. Um, some new events which we've rolled out, uh, this past year, Park Capers isn't technically, um, from twenty-four, but the planning went into it. Uh, last year, uh, a rec on the go was our traveling, um, barbecue that we were doing throughout the, the community, our movie nights and our family series, which was free, uh, events. There in total, we've had about twenty thousand, uh, people participate uh, at our events. Some of that is estimating, uh, a lot of our events we aren't requiring registration for. Uh, but we are tracking how many people are coming to them. And we're trying to develop things that are non, uh, your typical rec active, uh, so cultural, educational, uh, as well as social, um, events. On the program growth side of things, so we have currently sixty-seven programs, which we do, that's made up of thirty-seven youth programs and thirty adult, uh, the youth are kind of what you're typically, uh, expecting when it comes to recreation. Your, your basketball, soccer, lipos, as well as a handful of the summer camps that we do. Um, what we've done a lot with the adult side of things is continue to push to third parties uh, and kind of utilizing them and their expertise to organize and kind of run our adult programming. Um, one of the, the areas with both the program growth and the event growth when it ties into the, the city plan is goal. Uh, fifty-eight of forty percent of South Burlington kind of being engaged in, uh, the recreation events and programs. Uh, when it comes to total numbers, uh, obviously that's surpassed. When it comes to unique participants, that's something that we still definitely have to to grow in to get to, uh, eight thousand unique people participating. One thing that I did want to mention, uh, that we've seen a lot this year is a lot more than just South Burlington, uh, people utilizing our events and programs. Uh, so in total pulling the numbers off of events and programs that we have registration for, uh, we saw thirty-six different towns and cities, uh, coming to our stuff. And that's only a fraction, uh, of our events, because the majority of them we don't register for. They're completely open, uh, and free for people to come to. Expanding access is a big area which we focused on this, this past year. Uh, transportation wise, we partnered with SSDA, uh, at SB Night Out to offer round trip shuttle service, uh, at Champlin Housing Trust. Uh, in addition, we've been doing about two to three events every month where, uh, residents have been able to contact us directly. Uh, and we've been able to set them up with one-off, uh, trips to our events. So, uh, for example, I need a ride to uh, the holiday dinner tomorrow, uh, SSDA would come pick me up and drop me off, then take me back home. Uh, doesn't have to be a, a group event type of thing off of that. Uh, as far as locations, uh, in total, we did things at twenty-one different locations, uh, this year. So that was made up of ten different parks, uh, five, the five schools, senior center, uh, three kind of random locations throughout the, the city, uh, for a rec on the go. And then also the, the ice rink. So we've been trying to kind of get all over the, the city. And then lastly, on the equity side of things, just about ninety percent of our events were completely free. Um, and that also included, we're estimating about, uh, fourteen hundred meals, uh, that we did on the rec side of thing, not counting the senior center. Uh, increased revenue, we increased our revenue through new sponsors, uh, so we had over twenty new sponsors this year. Um, as well as kind of my goal with the increase in adult programming is to help, uh, increase revenues through adults to help offset some youth programming costs, uh, in the future. We still have ways to go on that. Um, but that would be one of my goals going forward. Uh, and then I also wanted to highlight the senior center. So like I said, we're in, uh, there every day eight thirty to four, we're fourteen, uh, kind of continuous programs going through there. And then we're expecting about twenty-nine hundred meals uh, served in our lunches, which we'd host every Wednesday and Friday. Budget wise, uh, we, I listed out a few of the, the changes. Um, there's really not too much, uh, a lot of the expense changes that you see here are more, uh, shifting in expenses from line item to, to line item. Uh, we made some cuts in some of the general operating, uh, expenses to, to accommodate these. And then they're also largely offset by increases in, uh, revenues. And on the net, like the general fund side of things, um, on the general operating budget, not counting like staff salaries and, uh, benefits. The expenses for FY twenty-six, twenty-five went up about eighty-five hundred dollars and the revenues are going up about twenty-seven thousand dollars to get more in line with what we made, uh, last year. And then the main, uh, money allocated, uh, also in, uh, CIP for the, the parks master plan, uh, which is rolling as well. One thing to kind of highlight, uh, as well with the increased revenues, um, our programs and events have jumped from last year to this year. Previously, they were about seventy-seven percent self-funded through revenues, which we generated. Uh, going forward, they're about ninety percent, uh, for this upcoming year.
I think Adam should also get bonus points for specifically referencing the city plan in his presentation.
Um, some emerging issues, obviously the, the master plan there, um, it will be, um, once that's complete, um, allocating the, the resources which are needed to kind of implement those and, uh, the staffing that's needed to implement, uh, what's being, um, recommended through that, that plan. Indoor, uh, recreation, uh, space, obviously it's something which is always talked about, um, but it's becoming more and more uh, needed. Um, we have utilized, uh, the schools and the, the U Mall. We still don't control the, the scheduling and staffing around to that. Uh, so we do have to, to be strategic. For example, uh, right now, we can't be in the U Mall, um, based off of their holiday season, uh, and renting out the, the facility, which we do use. Um, and I also wanted to kind of highlight, like, how much we are using these spaces. So currently right now, uh, with our youth basketball and our adult sports, we are on Sundays in one of the schools, Mondays in two separate schools. Tuesdays, we're in four different schools. Wednesdays, we're in the one. Thursday, we're in three. Uh, Friday, we're in one and Saturday, we're in two. So between balancing that and then also what the schools needs are, uh, we're pretty much like maxed out how often we're able to, to do that if we wanted to start doing more stuff. Um, it also provides a challenge with people understanding where we are. Uh, you have to be on top of the rec department to know where we are at a given time because we are constantly moving around. Uh, and then lastly, from a staff side of things, not having our own space makes us incredibly inefficient. Uh, we're having to routinely set up, break down, move stuff. For example, a blue sweater, uh, when the other day we were setting up and moving things from five seventy-seven from veterans park, uh, waiting until City Hall was closed to set up Saturday night, uh, and then staying here post-run Sunday to clean everything up. So that City Hall will be open on Monday. Um, another kind of, there's a few other city plan goals in there. Uh, but I'll kind of hit the, the multifamily housing, uh, emerging issue is something which is maybe key as more and more people are living in, uh, high-density housing, how they're using, uh, our rec space, uh, how they're using our parks, how they're using our resources, programming, uh, and events. And then, uh, kind of going back to the indoor side of things as well. We're still incredibly seasonally based. Um, so during June through September last year, uh, we hosted fifty-eight uh, of our hundred events, uh, on top of the dry fitness series. We were in our parks and a hundred and twenty-two days. We were in them eighty-nine, uh, so it does spread, uh, our staff fairly thin during the, the summer timeframe. Uh, so that's another issue as well.
Hey, Adam, can just, um, to the indoor space, I'm just wondering, you know, obviously something this council and the city's talked about for many years, but are there creative ways to address it? I know we've talked about partnering. But, you know, I noticed around the city, um, a fair amount of space that is underutilized. You've Sears building in the mall, there's other buildings along the street. Have you thought about um, what it would take to reutilize some of those spaces, not, not build an entire structure, but repurpose?
Yeah, I mean, that would be a, a route for sure.
Maybe I, I challenge you to maybe.
We've had, Lon and I have had several conversations with the U Mall owners about some kind of joint, uh, co-location in the future as they invest in their parcel. Um, we have been incredibly fortunate with U Mall right now that they are letting us use that space for free. Um, it is a huge asset for us. Um, so I, I think there is possibility for that over time. I think the question right now for specifically the U Mall space is how much do we want to invest in, uh, lease stake or an investment stake in a facility that is going to redevelop? But partnering with them on
Building may not. I mean, it's a big building. It's got wall ceilings, right? It could be a terrific rec space. It's got great infrastructure. Presumably it's got good HVAC and it's, right? I mean, I don't know.
I don't think we want to be the ones limiting the redevelopment potential of that space moving forward, the Sears space specifically.
I just want to compliment your social media presence, right? And, uh, the, the, the tweets on Twitter, I'm gonna say Twitter, right? Are really excellent. And, uh, when you see the heart light up, it's, that's certainly me that's, is number one. Not that I'm there very often, but anyway, and I just want to say maybe if you thought about going to Blue Sky as well, if, if somebody could add that to another item, yeah. And I, I'm not on Instagram or, and I don't have Facebook on my phone. But anyway, it's really important. All those different social media outlets are really important for notification. I'd love one day to have an app, a city app that's could go on the phone, that does all notifications automatically right on the phone. Wouldn't that be great? Someday, I don't know. Thanks.
Uh, if, if I can just jump in and Adam say that, uh, all these program events for, for someone who moved recently to South Burlington, uh, my family has found them as just this great opportunity to, to, to actually get to know the city. Cause as you said, you are spread out. It's one, one benefit is that you're forced to go out of your normal sort of routine. But especially when you have the pop-up park, uh, events. Uh, uh, and it's also a way to meet people from other parts of the community that you perhaps don't, aren't in your own neighborhoods. I, I really applaud it in terms of a of creating a sense of we are South Burlington. Though as, as you say, in some of the events I've participated, they're clearly people from other areas. Going forward, uh, to, uh, when you look at the, uh, uh, master plan and you said, we, we refer to conclude this year, or next year, I'm sorry, at the end of next year, what is this, for us in the city council? What is the budget cycle of the, our, we need to be thinking about in terms of acting upon whatever recommendations come out of it? Is that FY twenty-seven, twenty-eight? How, how far out is that it become a decision point on res- resources expenditure, aside from the, what I fully agree is a recreational ambition of a recreational facility?
Um, now I'm thinking through that. I would imagine if it's kind of completing and the, the answers are coming out the end of next year, it would be in fiscal year twenty-eight.
So I think our hope is to have very preliminary ideas for the FY twenty, next year at this time for the FY twenty-seven budget. And then out for multiple years from there.
Just want to say, um, looking at the expansion in programming that's happened and looking at the expansion in revenues that are supporting that, um, I think you're doing a pretty remarkable job and I just wanted to put that out there. Extremely remarkable job. Ditto. And I really, uh, appreciate the champ coming on Sunday to the, uh, Lee Sweater Run. And, uh, we agreed not to tell Raleigh about the selfie that we took. Okay.
Sure.
Okay, I'll move into the library. Uh, the library is, uh, we have twenty-two staff at the library, half of whom are uh, greeting you at a tea party. Um, that was a going away party for staff on the screen. Uh, nine of them are full-time and the rest are part-time from somebody that works three hours a week to somebody who works twenty-eight hours a week. Well, you're doing something. Um, so the uh the budget for FY twenty-six shows um a small increase. And that was intentional. Uh, we tried to keep the increase low, to keep it as flat as we could because we are hoping that you will uh be looking at the additional projects at the end of the budget and agree to fund us so that we can be open on Sundays. Um, we have a big, beautiful library, we have uh thousands of people in all the time, and we would like to make that accessible seven days a week instead of six days a week. We've gotten a lot of feedback from the uh people who've moved in recently across the street uh when we've gone out to talk to them and welcome them to say that uh they really would like to have Sunday hours. So uh that's the the highlight about the expenses. Otherwise, things are moving around a little bit, uh less money for DVDs and books on CD and moving more of that towards online uh online resources for those kinds of things. Uh, we have um uh program expenses went down because those are things that we can fund with help from uh other sources. We had raised it up this year and realized, okay, we can get money for that from grants and gifts and other sources. Uh, revenue is interesting for us. It's uh not, hasn't traditionally been a big library thing, but because we are now uh in charge of the rooms and the auditorium, uh there is revenue. Every year I try to anticipate what that's going to be and I fall short. So um revenues for room reservations continue to rise. Uh, there will be a loss in revenue from uh uh non-resident cards. They cost twenty-five dollars a year. Uh, you access just the physical materials in the library to check out uh because Burlington is finally going to be joining the home card system, which is what we work with with every other town around us where you bring your Colchester Library to us, we add you in and then you can check out materials at our library. But you go to your home library to take care of certain library things. Um, so I'm sure that that the loss of revenue from uh temporary cards will be offset by by room use.
Do you do you anticipate getting rid of the DVD collection at all?
So um getting rid of the DVD and uh CD collection is has is been a conversation for a couple of years. Uh, and we'll be starting this year to really make, to draw that plan out and we'll be starting with books on uh books on CD first cause our DVD numbers still continue to go up with a slight, a tiny increment.
Checkouts and DVDs are still going, they're going up still? So people still have DVD players out there?
They do.
Great.
Um, and of course, the people who do use those resources uh will be desperate when uh we stop providing them because that is all they have, they do not, they don't have the money or the will to or the ability to use online resources or they that they aren't getting what they want from their online resources. So uh but yes, there, that is uh one of my goals for this year is to actually create that schedule.
Thanks. I I haven't checked out any, but I've looked through the whole collection and it's a really rich collection.
Yeah.
I just hate to see it somehow dissipated into, you know, the techno ether out there and then they were lost, but anyway.
Yeah, we had, we had somebody collecting an A V for many years and they did a great job. Uh, so our successes, we have many and and limiting it to to just a a slide or two is challenging. Um, these items speak for themselves. Um, the the poet in residence for which we got a grant, we had seven programs with that person, lots of different hands-on and other programs. We had forty-five people at the final one, which was part of illuminate last year. I think all of you met our social work intern uh last year, Evelyn, in the lobby where she was meeting and greeting and offering people uh a friendly ear and uh resource um resource referral. Uh, that uh that position was available again this year and we didn't find a good match for the library. So we'll, we'll keep working on that as each school year begins. One of the things about our training, so we we work with staff all the time. We do de-escalation exercises on a regular basis just in case because we do have people who come in who are unhappy about something or having a hard day or we don't know what's going on with them and that can be difficult. But this particular training was uh I think one of the most useful because what it brought to light was that um if I am in the library and I'm and I am working with somebody who is is irate about something or feels like they could be moving towards aggression, that I have to recognize for myself, am I really in danger? Is it a safety issue or is it just that I'm uncomfortable? Because I don't know how, I don't really know what they're saying, I don't know where they're coming from. And I think that that's been um one of our most valuable trainings was to really be able to to distinguish between safety and discomfort. And a lot of it turns out to be discomfort and not safety at all. As Adam mentioned, we've been working with the Recreation and Parks Department more on programming and on cross-publicizing events. We've also done programming with the Energy Committee, Housing and National Natural Resources, as some of you all have been involved with. And I think that that's a really great, um, I think that that is a good goal for us to be working with you all and all of our peers on um information and so- social and cultural events that we can tie together with um having a good time and also learning things and also bringing in members of the public who have an an area of expertise that they'd like to share that it's, it's not the library staff that are all experts in all things. It's, it's having a good model for getting those people in through us to the the greater public. And finally, uh we had in FY twenty-four, we had a very short turnaround on uh from the legislature on Act one fifty-two uh that now there were several pieces to it that had to do with public libraries and school libraries. The the major piece for us was that um in a three, two-month period, we had to um make sure that we had reset up our system so that children twelve and above now have uh privacy on what they've checked out um and other library matters uh as that they have to be asked the question of whether they want to maintain that privacy or whether they want their parents to have access to their records. Uh, and that was a big change. So there's a lot of things we have to set up behind the scenes. So then there's marketing that we have to do and we have to talk to the parents when they come in. Uh, and as you can imagine, for some parents, that is not an issue at all. And for other parents, it is, what do you mean? You're giving my twelve-year-old privacy? That I will tell them that they cannot do that. Um, so it's a, it's, it was a tricky situation and and there have been, but I think that um our new head of circulation has handled it really well, both from the administrative perspective and also in coaching all of us and how to talk about it with uh the public. The the next slide um just talks about some success in numbers. And this is FY twenty-four compared to FY twenty-three. The library visits as we um have gone up by twenty-two percent and checkouts by thirteen. So that's shifted a little bit from the earlier uh picture of twenty nineteen to now. And but the big one is that we have over ten thousand people coming to the library in twenty twenty-four to use room reservations. Uh, and I've checked that twice because when I said it out loud the other day, people said, are you sure? I'm like, I'm sure, but I'm gonna check it again. That number does not include city use of the auditorium for meetings or for any other uh room, nor does it include uh library, not sure where we went.
Um, something's happening to my computer, which is weird. Oh, Adam, can you share now?
Oh, thanks. Uh, so it also doesn't include library programs. So this is individuals in the public who are reaching out to reserve the rooms. Uh, and then it is how many people they are anticipating to come to their meeting or their event. It does not also include people who come in all the time just to say, I'm looking for a quiet place to re-meet, do a Zoom call, where can I go? Um, and then that does, so that that isn't counted in this number as well. So our being here, just being here and being the beautiful space that we are with the variety of microspaces that we have in the library is critical to our community. Uh, and then uh our programs uh are the last thing, which is uh in FY twenty-four, we had six hundred and eighty programs and ninety-seven hundred people attended. So emerging issues, we have some overlap with Adam. Uh, the the first one is a city priority that we share about reaching out to uh to people who might not be traditional library users, who might be in the community and not even aware that that libraries and city services are for them. And of course, then we move to the neighborhood in particular where we are constantly meeting new people, going out and talking to them, inviting them in to talk to us. Uh, we have an event coming up Saturday, January eleventh in the morning. That's where we're going to be, that's just going to be called Welcome Neighbors. And we're gonna get the word out to the apartments locally as well as uh broadly for anyone to come in and and learn about um services and have some hot chocolate. Uh, the the next one about uh after-school kids ties in to the one at the end about kids having some uh input, some more input into their spaces. So we have not had a uh an after-school kind of a latchkey group coming in uh until this year. And this year, we have six to eight kids that are there almost every day for five hours at a time. Uh, and so there are two pieces to that. One is wh- what do they need from the library and how can we create their, make their spaces more um fit what they are looking for? Uh, and also, we have uh an opportunity to learn more about kids and behavior management and refocusing behaviors, uh directing people in different directions. It also gives us a chance to be aware of um food insecurity a- as well as um challenges that are going on for people all the time that we can't see. But um with kids, sometimes you hear about them more than with grownups. So it's, it's a, it's a really interesting, it's an interesting time for us to 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 move into how are we gonna best serve our our youngest population that can be in the library alone? Um, so I already talked about Sunday hours, so those are our emerging issues.
On the joint side of things to kind of close it up, uh we hit a little bit on this first bullet point in both of our presentations, but uh with the increase uh in the multifamily homes, obviously, the the rec and the library uh are going to see different demand uh than we have in the past just based off of uh needs of the the public.
Yeah, and then the next one is specifically um the needs of the public who is experiencing uh a lack of housing, mental health and addiction issues. And what's our role in um helping them in our community? And then um the last one is what we've kind of started on and what we'll continue to work on together is um as rec does more programming, it's a good time for us to look at what's the programming that we do? What's the programming that rec does? Um, let's make sure we're not doing the same thing on the same day. Is there a different emphasis for different departments? Can we do this, can we get together and do the program together? So those are kind of an ongoing conversation that we're having because what we really want to do is serve all the residents of South Burlington in the most varied way that we can. Um, so it's great to be talking about it together. Any questions?
Uh, just a quick observation, because I think we've talked about this before, but we have talked about many of the social services that have landed up in schools without funding. And it's hard not to look at what you're seeing as emerging issues and saying, this is another offset of of the phenomenon we're seeing in society right now. I do really have concerns about training of people to deal with certain issues, the the liability associated with that, um particularly with supervising minors um and and just safety in general. And I think there's a lot of opportunity to coordinate with schools on some of the challenges you may be seeing in the library as well.
Yeah, I I, yes and no. Um, so it's tricky because in schools, teachers are in loco parentis and in public libraries, we are not. Which doesn't mean that we can't learn from each other. I know uh when we recently had the event with the English language learning families and so some of the teachers came over from Marquette um and they saw some kids at the library that they knew from their classes. And so then there's kind of a tenuous, we can talk about this, but we can't give up private information and they can't give up private information. But maybe there is room for us to talk about best way to serve kids who are in a situation like this. So that's, that's kind of the level at which we have um discovered what you're saying, yes.
Cause um like the parks uh and rec parks, it's, I think this is one of the core pillars of of community, of bringing people together. Uh, this human contact, which is very much a part of our uh city plan, so commendable. I was just wondering if uh in terms of the access issue. Uh, I just uh I spoke to a business recently which opted not to move to the city center to fill in one of the real estate spaces because their concern was insufficient turnover of parking and availability and therefore losing the clientele. Uh, I was just wondering if you're getting any feedback and I know and I I, you know, applaud the city for doing the city plan on parking the downtime. Were you hearing any comments about would love to come but couldn't find parking? Is this becoming an issue yet or or not so?
So I know that Jesse and Alana are working on parking, a big parking plan. Um, and uh you know, it's one of those things where half the time that people mention parking, they're saying, I couldn't find a place to park. And the other half the time that people are talking about parking, they say, oh, I'd rather come here than go to any other library because the parking is so great. So I can't tell you that we 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 see a trend more one way than the other, but hearing both of those makes me think that maybe we're on, we're in a good place.
So I just want to say that um I think the library is like the real cultural anchor of city center, you know, as well as the rest of the city, you know, and and you've watched that progression from the high school to the U mall to here, right? And this facility is, I mean, it's the current apex, right, of that path? But it it's really important to the community and so I appreciate the work that you and your staff do um satisfying everybody's needs that come in, right? Just being here is satisfying a need for a lot of people, right? Being warm and having some bathrooms, whatever. So anyway, I just wanted to state that that that's really important to the to to uh our city center.
Thank you, yeah, I think being welcoming is our top job.
All right, thank you, guys.
You guys are both doing it in spades. Thank you.
They are rock stars. So let's talk about time for a minute. We are an hour and a half behind. Um, so we have we have an hour and a half left on our schedules program and we have police, fire and general government and your discussion left. So some options are to, you know, spend the next hour on public safety, do a fly-through general government and then save your discussion for Monday night. Another option is to do an hour on public safety, give you all some time to talk. I could do the general government one on Monday night quickly. Um, and with that, I might free up some of the general government folks here to go work on other things. Um, what's your pleasure? What would be most helpful for you all in terms of your conversation over the next couple of weeks?
Do we want to have the discussion on the Monday night? We'll save it for then? Yeah, okay, all right, so, okay.
Great.
Good.
Burke, you're up.
We're gonna make you sit?
Chief, I can I can share for you.
You're fine doing that?
For some reason chiefs really don't like to log on to Zooms.
We just want to follow the script.
Right.
For the record, my name is Sean Burke. I have the privilege of serving as your police chief and I've done so since twenty eighteen. I'm here to talk about the police department budget. We go to the next slide. Thanks. So this is our organization. Essentially, we live in three areas. It's the opposite of the chief of police, where we have myself, the deputy chief, our executive assistant in the community justice center. And then we have two bureaus, patrol being the most visible entity of any police department. And that's commanded by Lieutenant Chris Patai on the left, my left. The viewer's right. You have our org chart there. Any tile that has a red tint to it is a place where we're holding vacancies. And I'll talk about that as we as we push through this. The other bureau of the police department is the administrative branch that's committed by Lieutenant Greg Jaeger, and that includes our emergency communication center that serves both police, fire EMS. Our Bureau of Criminal Investigation, which are detectives, we have detectives assigned in-house and at the Chittenden Unit for Special Investigations, as well as the Vermont State Police Drug Task Force. Our youth service entity, which amounts to one officer that serves all of the public schools and the communities, private schools, our records division, and then a state grant funded position, we house a human trafficking case manager who serves essentially the northern part of the state. The organization in FY twenty four responded to twelve thousand seven hundred and ninety nine incidents. That's an eleven percent increase over FY twenty three. Officers in the street and detectives in the field made seven hundred and ninety eight criminal arrests. That's up nineteen percent FY twenty three, FY twenty four. So successes in public safety, everyone we put on the street came back and went home to their loved ones. That's, you know, our most important metric. That and we enjoy a very safe community here in South Burlington. We're not immune from crime. I'll talk about the emergency emerging crime trends, but what we don't see is stranger violence in large number in the community, and we're grateful for that. We do experience persistent levels of property crime. As you can see, the chart, it's a little small here, looked better in the city report that I submitted. We have still have marked increases in larceny in general, whether that's something stolen from a porch, something stolen from an unlocked car and retail theft. Retail theft is up five hundred and twenty three incidents in FY twenty four. You can see the progression there from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four. That's troubling, as well as the crime trend related to stolen vehicles. We're now averaging like a hundred and twenty stolen cars per year. These are cars that are unlocked with the keys in them that are used in commission of other crimes, which is, you know, quite quite frustrating as well. The other areas that we try to focus on are burglaries, which remain rather static. And in some in substance, that's really what we face day to day in terms of criminality in the city. The other area of great operational concern are those that are suffering with unmet social service needs. I've spoken about how we kind of capture this previously, but essentially there's five incident categories. Welfare checks, overdose, suicidal persons and intoxication, as well as mental health calls. So those five service calls are captured here in the graphic on the bottom right of the chart that I'm looking at. And post pandemic, we're responding to about a thousand incidents per year related to those incident types. Our strong partner in that work is our community outreach team. And we are actually leveraging them a little bit differently. So beginning in quarter four of FY twenty four, we had a conversation with our community outreach workers and they are now the primary responders to mental health mental health related incidents, as well as welfare checks, where there's no reported safety risk. So they're going without a police officer, but if there's any any notation of a safety risk, it's remains a co-response. And that's been successful, given kind of some of the staffing challenges that we're facing. The other partner that's very strong in responding to this crime and disorder in the community is our community justice center. As you all know, it is actually within our organization. There's a great deal of synergy in using our team in the community justice center and restorative justice principles to resolve a lot of a substantial number of our misdemeanor level crimes. And what we see from that are an an opportunity that folks don't generally have in the traditional criminal legal system, where the community is heard through our volunteers, where the affected party is actually heard and the person taking responsibility for their behavior are all heard and understand the impact of that decision. And, you know, the data is only confined to our program, but what we see really is a pretty low recidivism rate. And I think it's, it should become really a better rock or even a dock post of our criminal legal system, but it's not there yet. If we go to the next slide. I'll talk about some of the challenges with both the community outreach program and the community justice center in in a subsequent slide. Another fiscal year twenty four success was we finished the remodel on our dispatch center. So as mentioned, we've we dispatched for both police, fire. We went through a process that spanned FY twenty three, FY twenty four and completely redid the original dispatch center, which was essentially three dispatching desks. We took all of that out, put in four state of the art communications communication desks, if you will. State of the art technology and implemented Fire CAD for the fire department, which is the first time that there's been any IT investment in our fire department and how they are deployed since, I don't even know, like the history of this, since the police department took on dispatching the fire department. So we're very proud of that work. One thing that I did forget to add to the slide because my brain doesn't operate on the fiscal year all that well is we did successfully advertise, screen, recruit and hire a deputy chief of police. Sean Briscoe joined us in September of twenty twenty three, which is vital to the organization's success moving forward. In terms of the FY twenty six budget, our staffing on the sworn officer side is a huge challenge in FY twenty four. We essentially operated the entire year with eighteen to twenty percent vacancy rate. Today, as I said here, we're twenty five percent vacant. We've got ten ten openings. I will say that through a little bit of advertisement dollars and a lot of work from Andy and Lieutenant Jaeger, we've got much better advertisement material and we're spending a small amount of money with social media in order to boost our posts and advertisements and we are luckily screening more applicants. By way of example, this this coming class in February, we do have one officer that we're going to hire for it, but we did screen out about a half dozen others, which is better than we have done in in other periods. So moving back to our budget priorities, what we're seeking here is obviously the lion's share of our our budget is our people. I realize that the vacancy rate is a challenge, but what we need to do is be prepared as we move through the collective bargaining agreement process to settle with a very competitive salary and benefit package to not only, I think, would most importantly, retain the talented officers that we have here working for our community and then bring on like minded individuals to join them and build out our police force. The other budget challenge that we do have in FY twenty six pertains to our community justice center. Historically, our community justice center received about a hundred and forty nine thousand dollars a year from the Department of Corrections to do pre-charge work. So these are criminal cases that never touched the docket at the district court and go through the process that I described earlier, which has so much more value. There was a bill that passed through the session last year and made it through both chambers. It essentially moved the fiduciary responsibility of community justice centers in the state from the Department of Corrections to the Attorney General's office. When that move was made, the Department of Corrections maintained their fiscal allotment for the work that they do because they do a a lot of work related to restorative practice within their facilities and also with folks that have made it through the criminal legal system and perhaps around parole parole or probation. But they're no longer responsible for the pre-charge work. When they made this move, lawmakers did not send that bill to appropriations. So as it stands right now, there are zero funds allotted to that. So essentially, as the state is building out their budget, we'll start to see a little bit, we'll have a little bit of visibility in January on the AG's priority and how much money they're going to ask for, but we will have no idea until May where the rubber actually meets the road. So in order to keep our center viable as this change process kind of makes its way through, we have added general fund dollars to help stand up our our CJC center because we see the value and how it's part of the ecosystem in which we deliver public safety services. Another challenge. Yeah, of course.
So agreed with everything the chief just said about CJC. It is critical to how we do business. The general fund dollars we have put in the budget are not enough to fully fund our current level of operations. It was our attempt to start contributing general fund dollars at a greater level to try and maintain a service locally. I believe this is an area where we are going to have, we are going to be forced to regionalize in a different way than we have before. And I think that that's going to be a much I think we are going to have a council chief conversation about that in the next six months. So heads up on that.
Are our reps and senators well aware of this?
Thanks for that. On the community outreach team front, it's a little discouraging as well. News from the state, the Department of Mental Health has studied their processes. Their focus is on really building the mobile crisis response in each county across the state to deal with those with the unmet social service needs in the community. And with that, what's no longer recognized is the low barrier or non-villable services that community outreach provides. So they have pulled back about a half million dollars worth of funding to our community outreach team, which has resulted in subscribing municipalities coming to the table and figuring out with the leadership team at Howard how to increase the fees at which municipalities pay for community outreach to keep it functional. I will tell you, you know, I've been here from since twenty eighteen. I'm in my thirtieth year of policing. We cannot police in modern times without a resource such as the community outreach team, the ability to meet folks where they're at, connect them with services, free up officer time, especially at a time where our officer count is so low, is invaluable. So in this year, we have asked again, probably not for all of the general fund dollars that we will eventually need to sustain this program, but enough to keep it on the streets, serving our community in FY twenty six.
I just, this is my commentary, not the chief's commentary. I think these two examples are really interesting statewide examples of Chittenden County demonstrating success and innovative practice through community justice and through community outreach. And appropriately statewide lawmakers saying if we are going to invest at the state level in these kind of innovations, we need to be investing in them equally statewide, which is a noble attempt. But in doing so, they are eroding the success Chittenden County has had. And I think that that is a cost burden that is shifting from state funding, therefore to municipal funding because of that that prioritizes money through the rest of Vermont by taking it away from Chittenden County.
Yeah, the next one.
And when everybody is and when everybody has talked about budget universally, safety is one of the things that everybody in our community is very concerned about and wants to fund. And so these two pieces, we need to find the way to to keep them up and running.
One point on that, and it actually does fails into what Heather was talking about in the library, you know, safety is also a perception. Are we uncomfortable? Are we unsafe? And, you know, I think that's a good question for neighbors to ask themselves in those moments. What these programs actually do is deliver a service that has dignity. And that's, you know, really, you know, valuable. And in terms of how we police, that's a core tenet of why we do this work. So moving into the CIP, we have our standard fleet replacement. We're looking to replace two police cruisers this year. We will consider alternative fuel or EV based on the vehicle's specific purpose and the available technology. I will say here, this current fiscal year, Ford Motor Company did not have the hybrid technology available for this purchase cycle. So we did end up buying two gasoline cruisers this year because they are frontline cars that have to operate. Next year, as long as, you know, the maintenance gremlins and the collision collision factor doesn't get to us, we're probably in a place where we would be replacing cars that are not frontline cruisers where this alternative fuel technology could be leveraged.
So so our cruiser that was totaled back last March on Shelburne Road.
Yes.
After the gentleman was hit by the bike, did that, did the person, the DUI driver, did their insurance pay to replace that vehicle?
So that becomes a matter between the insurance carriers. And when we have a total loss like that, we're responsible for the deductible. Travelers replaced our car at market value and then they litigate with the responsible party in trying to recoup those losses. So Chief, I remember last year we talked about buying a couple of hybrid cars for the police department. That that never, that didn't happen, you're saying, because they weren't available? Those two, yes, we've got five out on the street. Oh, okay. From an earlier purchase.
Okay.
And, you know, once we have a full year of da- data, Lou is going to help us look at, you know, how they stack up against their gas counterparts. The more important part of our CIP this year is that the police department, we house the the dispatch center. We're also looking at the public safety radio infrastructure in a as a whole. So in twenty seventeen, the city went to the voters with a bond to replace all of the hardware. That includes mobile radios that police officers and firefighters carry, or I'm sorry, portable radios that they carry, mobile radios that are in fire apparatus and police cruisers. And then the antenna repeater microwave technology that make the communication loop whole. And I believe that that bond was either one point seven or one point eight million dollars, very expensive technology that equipment is approaching ten years soon. So what we have put forth in the capital plan this year and for subsequent years is an investment in this in the future. So the city ideally would not have to go back on a bond when the technology is at end of life. For the next two years, it is, the request is two hundred thousand dollars. In FY twenty seven, the city will make the final payment on the existing bond, which is about a hundred and ninety grand a year. It would be ideal then to continue out over the next several years to keep investing at, you know, a rate of two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year. So as the public safety and radio infrastructure comes to end of life, we could replace that hardware. Ideally, that would be incremental. Perhaps, you know, a supposal that the fire chief and I have talked about is in FY twenty eight or twenty nine, replacing the handheld units in a subsequent year, the mobile radio units, and then finally the larger radio infrastructure, the repeater antenna system. Any questions there? The last thing that lives in the the police department CIP is the fifty thousand dollar stewardship fund for our building. So emerging issues, and then I'll be done. Retention and recruitment of sworn officers is absolutely our focus. We're seeing again a little bit of improvement in this regard, but the chart here illustrates our challenge. Since FY twenty, we have not been able to really outpace in any meaningful way the rate at which we attract officers. And I will tell you that the lion's share of our officers that have separated in that time have either reached their retirement age or no longer want to work in patrol. There's two things that our police department has to do. We have to answer the phone in the dispatch center and we have to have patrol officers on the street to respond to incidents. And this is a nationwide trend that we read about all the time. We are leveraging everything that we've learned. Recently, we were at the IACP, the International Chief of Police Conference in Boston, attending seminars on recruitment and retention. You could not find a seat. Attending seminars on recruitment and retention, you could not find a seat in those particular seminars. So there's no easy answer here, but we hope to, again, through the collective bargaining process, at least secure very competitive salary and benefits to retain what we have. Because when we look at succession and when we need detectives, sergeants, other formal leaders, we really need to be able to hold on to what we have. Another emerging issue that we have is succession planning. So there's about five of us that are approaching our retirement window over the next three fiscal years, and we need to prepare leaders to carry this work forward. And then lastly, we've talked about it briefly, is this troubling trend from the state where we have built great public safety systems, teams in order to respond to what we see as emerging issues in our community. And the state funding is being pulled out from underneath the feet of those teams, which is frustrating. With that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
A quick question, Chief. You had five open positions on the org chart, but ten you indicated. Were there multiple positions on that?
Yeah, so just by way of example on that chart, so the traffic safety officer position, that's a senior position that's open. There's actually two in your service that are open. And then in patrol, we're holding the remainder of those vacancies. You know, the the difference now from where we were three years ago is that we have a twelve hour patrol schedule. So we can run it a little more efficient, but we really need to be in a spot where we've got four officers plus their sergeant on the day tour. One officer each on that, on the swing tour, which is noon to midnight, and then three on mids.
In terms of recruiting, I had spoke to a city councillor from a neighborhood municipality who was going through the same process now. The union negotiations, is this ultimately an issue that has to be addressed at the regional? Is that a possible solution? As you suggested, there is no silver bullet to solve this, but is approaching regionalization or at least synchronizing negotiations in some way to create a competitive, more competitive market instead of competing against each other?
The idea of regional policing. Yeah, so I think, you know, policing is a pretty intimate public service that we provide. Each community has different or rather unique needs or expectations. And I think it would be a long conversation between policymakers and the communities that police officers are going to serve in terms of what that needs to look like. And then what's oversight look like in that model? I know that Heinzberg and Richmond are doing a little bit of this work now. I think it's easier to do in a market like that where you don't have a lot of crime in general. And your police department is really focused on, you know, whether it's traffic safety or whatever the priorities are for the community. I think, you know, when I compare my experience to Burlington, there's vast differences in the expectations and the in the level of service that we provide in this community that Burlington is unable to. And I don't know if, you know, the community values and expectations of those police officers are necessarily the same. I think that, you know, there's probably other entities or other work that we do. By way of example, we have the Chitting Unit for Special Investigations. That group of detectives, they focus on sex crimes and serious child abuse neglect cases. And we subscribe to that, along with many other municipalities. You send a detective there to do very specialized work. And I think if we were going to maybe start to, you know, look at the need to do regional policing, I would focus in those areas. You know, criminal, criminal investigative, where it's much more of a process with the state attorney and less of a direct service provision day to day in a community.
One other question on recruitment. We heard at the CCPRC this morning that a challenge for a lot of services in Chitting County that people that are hired to do service cannot find housing within Chitting County adding you know, challenging commute as well as challenging climate action, having people travel far. Is that something that is, something that a hurdle that help, that challenges you?
Yeah, absolutely. Our new officers, it's really tough to find housing. And then once, you know, you're not once you're at a spot in your life where you no longer want police officers as roommates, and maybe you've met someone and you want to move on. That's, you know, it's really a problem for our young officers. I'll tell you another where, a place that's starting to manifest a bit as well. We, we had our canine officer, Sarah DeFiori in Canine Rush. They resigned this year, unfortunately. And as we will eventually embark to identify a new dog handler for the department, a big part of that process is a visit to their resident, a residential setting to make sure that it is safe and secure to have a police dog owned by a municipality live there. And if you've got, you know, a lion's share of your employees living in multi-unit or apartment house style settings, we may not be able to find the right fit in that regard.
One final question. So if you're stretched for personnel, is there like a priority list of types of calls that you get where eventually you might have to make a cut and say, these types of calls, we will not even respond to. So like a triage. You probably already have that. I'm just curious, is that going to, are more items going to be added to the do not re, will not respond list?
So I'm a little antiquated in this regard. If you call us, we may tell you that it's going to be a few minutes before we get there, but we will go. You know, I know that Burlington enacted a priority response plan. There's a lot of problems with that. And what we pay police supervisors, so the rank of police sergeant, what we pay them to do is to make these decisions in the moment and prioritize triage, call mutual aid when necessary and attend to the most acute. But then, you know, get back to the service calls. And I think that's really essential. And it's something that the community deserves. Once we can fill out our ranks a little bit more, constant optimist, optimistic viewpoint that I have, we shouldn't have a lot of trouble. I still applaud the bargaining unit agreeing with management a couple of years ago to transition to the twelve hour schedule because we were able to keep the requisite number of officers on the street that we need to attend to the calls, you know, as our data suggests. We're busiest, you know, and when, when town is populated, some from eight in the morning until about nine at night, and then it gets quiet overnight. But, you know, an area where we're probably going to fall down a little this winter, we saw it the other night, the night that it happened to snow. And we could have, you know, DPW needed us to attend to some of these parked cars. We had three guys in a hotel on Shelburne Road that would not vacate their room. We had to arrest them all, process them, drive them, you know, either to the emergency room or to St. Albans to the jail, and we're just unavailable. And that's just how this business goes.
But just to clearly agree and clearly underline that point. But for the calls where the experts have deemed that a community outreach person is better suited to respond than a police officer, we are responding to all calls. We do not have a list of calls that we do not respond to.
Thank you so much.
And we, we're close to a good afternoon, if not. But, you know, thanks for having us here. Chris and I are going to tag team this. This is my third budget presentation in city. And, you know, two years ago, where my first one, the fire department was certainly in crisis when I got here. And certainly a lot of thanks to the manager and the council for their support of helping us kind of rebuild an organization that was in trouble. And so a lot of ours, a lot of this is about feel, really feel good time for us. And we're doing great, great things. We'll start with our org chart. So we're currently authorized at forty three. That goes to forty six. Similar to the police department, most of our people are in the operational, what we call the operational component, the responders. We divide those people into three platoons. Each works twenty four hours on and forty eight hours off. Effective July one, that will go to thirty nine people working in that, in that platoon, in those platoons. And with a new schedule, go from a fifty six hour work week to a forty eight hour work week. We have Chief Francis, Deputy Chief Francis, who manages our prevention division. There's currently five of them there. That that includes the two new employees through rental registry, which are, obviously, we're running that more like an enterprise fund, but we, we do, yeah, they are co-mixed here with this, with this staffing.
So you can see trends, just like plus the country, our call volume continues to increase. We do about eighty percent of our calls are emergency medical calls for service. Some successes in fiscal year twenty four and some of these kind of approach on to twenty five, just with technology and the way it works. As Chief Park mentioned, we implemented a computer aided dispatching system for the fire department. It's actually a shared system with the city of Burlington. So allows us to share resources with them seamlessly, which is a nice thing. It also allows seamless redundancy for dispatching between police or between the two different dispatch centers, Burlington and South Burlington. Basically, the way it works is it takes a pre-programmed, pre-programmed call type, an address, and GIS and GPS locating of the apparatus to decide who goes to what calls. It divides the workload up better. It sends the units and the personnel that need to go to calls to those calls, and it keeps other units in service available for the next call. So it definitely provide, it allows us to provide a much more operational readiness stance for any calls that happen. And then with that, we incorporate, like I said, directly with Burlington. UVM Rescue and Vermont International Guard are tied right into it as well. So there's really a lot of time savings in that. That couples with our station alerting system that we've just installed that actually provides a lot, a lot less than the workload on the dispatchers. They have to front load their work with putting the information in, but the system through CAD actually is a text to speech dispatching now. So the dispatchers and our firefighters essentially rarely ever speak to each other. It's all done digitally and then that system just dispatches us and sends the appropriate units electronically. February of twenty four, the new rental registry ordinance was enacted. So we've been standing up to that that part of the department. Some statistics for that for you folks, right now, we have about three hundred and sixty unique addresses that are registered out of that. Three hundred and twelve of those addresses are long-term rentals, which gives us about twenty seven hundred units. Six hundred and sixty of those are affordable. And then you've got about fifty one short-term rentals. And nineteen of those are owner occupied. The rest are un-owner occupied. Teams working really hard to not only continue to increase the registrations, but they're fun, they're now up and running with being out in the street, day in and day out, doing the rental registry inspections. So that's working out well. Paramedics, in two thousand and twelve, the city sent through a grant, eight people to paramedic school. And after that, it kind of dwindled away from education and training for new paramedics. The last several years, we've been able to really send a budget for sending people to paramedic school, increased our numbers and really rewarded the people that have stayed with us to send them to paramedic school. And now we have fourteen paramedics. So out of forty people, operationally, we've got fourteen of those people are paramedics. Three are in school. And we're very lucky. We've recently received a private donation ear of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars earmarked for paramedic training. So we're able to use that to, right now, we're budgeted to send one person to paramedic school every year. We're able to divvy up that money over the next several years and send additional people that are interested in going to paramedic school, paramedic school. So that's a really great funding source and we're having a lot of success in putting the highest level of EMS care out in the streets. And then lastly, gender diversity, out of forty sworn people, six of those are females. So that is fifteen percent of our staff are female. Nationally, it's about five percent. So we're really proud of that. And we really see culturally and impactfully to the community, you know, the benefit of those females in our organization.
Questions?
How many fires, how many like significant fires did we have last year?
We probably put a hose on the ground a half a dozen times. You know, where you're on, in, on a, on a, either residential or commercial building. So, you know, then obviously other types of fires that if we didn't arrive at, could have been something else, but we probably were, that's probably, but I'm not far off.
Between our code enforcement and our requirements and our response times and the demographics of the city being a newer city overall and its building stock, we're lucky in that aspect.
A lot of preventative.
And that, yeah. I mean, the, the things that go through this, the work in this community's favor. We are a rather affluent community comparatively. Our housing stock is relatively new compared to some of the around us. And we have a very robust prevention division. The fact that we have five people doing prevention out of four, out of forty five is much more than, you know, City of Burlington has two people working in prevention, three.
When you think about the mission of the fire department, I'm just wondering. Is it almost like more centered on medical incidents than fire? Like, how do you think about the mission?
You know, that's a great question. Once, you know, back in the late nineties, my former boss changed the name of our organization to the Emergency Services Department because, you know, we are the all hazards approach, right? If someone doesn't know what to do, they call the fire department. So a cat was stuck in the wall of a bill, of a, you know, residence, they call us to open up the wall. But, but I, you know, think that what comes down to, just like police officers are often as much social workers as anything at the, at our core mission. What we have to be most prepared for, our most at-risk work, our, our structure fires. Our most dangerous work. And so while we do a lot of other things and in most, in most of the people we touch are having a bad day because of a medical condition. Our, again, our highest risk, least frequency are residential structure fires.
Because I was honestly thinking along the same lines, like is fire department. You know, kind of like, maybe it's outlet, like emergency services feels to me, based upon what you're describing, as a more apt description of your mission?
In, in, in our mission statement, it does relate heavily to all hazards with a heavy focus on the medical component. You know, there are a lot of departments that are the fire and medical department. I think when I came here, it was fire and rescue. But through our strategic planning and really our internal stakeholders, they like to be known as the fire department. Doesn't, you know, again, when we were called the emergency service department, I would answer the phone that way. And they would say, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the fire department. That, that's, that's us. So it's just, yeah, it's, it's very nuanced.
So for medical responses, can you tell us what percentage are the overdose? Incidents?
I could. I don't have that number in front of me.
Yeah, but feeling is it like ten percent?
Oh, no. I mean, I'd say it's fairly low.
Fairly low.
Fairly low.
But compared to Burlington, it's, it's much lower than Burlington.
Different world.
It's different world?
Different world.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it really is a different world.
And you still dispatch a truck with the ambulance to all medical incident, incidents?
The most medical is, there's a couple that we don't. We are in conversations because we can do this with our new technology, but it's a, it will be a challenge. It'll be an additional requirement for the dispatcher. We're looking at saying, picking the top six, the ones where we know we need the chest pain, shortness of breath, seizure, difficulty breathing, probably missing one or two others. Those, the ones you would send a full complement, where you need the effective response force, other, other ones you would send just an ambulance to. Our only, our biggest hesitation right now is over, over fifty percent, close to sixty percent of our staff have less than two years on the job. A very inexperienced group. You can do that when you're sending senior providers. I'm, I'm nervous to do that, send two people out only, because sometimes what you get dispatched to and what you find are two very different things. And often it's the case.
Thanks, Chief. I have two questions I may, you mentioned the continuous uptick in dispatches. Is that tied to population growth of South Burlington? Or is something else driving this continuous uptick in dispatches?
I, I, I think it's a little bit of both. You know, so we build a, we're building over here on, on the street. And I suspect that generates fifty to sixty responses a year. So, you know, again, that's, that's directly related to increase in population. And then secondly, there is just culturally, people rely on the ambulance because they think it's going to get them through the ER wait times faster. And so if they call us, then they're going to get, you know, they're going to get seen quicker. What happens is, no, we take them in, they get triaged and they sit in the waiting room. So, so it, it, it is interesting.
And the second question was about the registrar. There was this plan to set up this fund for people who perhaps do not have the ability to meet some.
Uh there was this plan to set up this fund for people who perhaps do not have the ability to meet some of the electric standards. Where is that? Because that's important to bring that. I would think that group perhaps more so than others are at risk of a, a fire, but yet need to be on the registry.
Uh so we have set the ability to take a portion of each registry and, and set it aside. We have not developed a criteria yet for people to seek those funds. Um and we're, you know, we're about, what was the number yesterday? A hundred and fifteen properties have been scheduled for an inspection, about forty have been completed. Um and, and that runs the gamut on violations.
In the next year or two.
Certainly within, within the next year that we'll have that up and running.
Great, thank you.
I have a quick follow-up question on uh deployment of, of forces to incidents. And I understand a little more why a fire truck goes to a lot of the incidents, but what is the budget impact between having just a ambulance go to an incident and having a full complement go?
I can't give you that number. I mean, where it comes is the life of an apparatus. All right, so we take a one-point-five-million-dollar ladder truck and send it on three thousand runs a year. That has a lesser, a greater expense to maintenance and fuel than it would if it was running fifteen hundred runs a year. But beyond that, I have not calculated that.
So because we have people on staff and facilities, sending them out or leaving them in the, in the?
Right. If, I mean, the, the true value, to be quite honest, is they're available for the next run because there's almost always simultaneous runs. And um it gives them a little bit more downtime. Quality of life.
Thank you.
Uh so FY twenty-six significant changes are, on, on the revenue side, we did squeak out additional forty thousand for electrical inspections. About half of that's just screwing up uh more in line with what the twenty-four actuals were. Um and the rest is, we, we will be coming back to you in the spring with an ordinance change that looks at additional fees for electrical inspections uh and thinks that we have some room to per grow there. Uh and then the ambulance billing increase, uh most of that comes from now on, because it's not on this list, uh is the um the operating of second ambulance that went into effect on July one for fiscal year twenty-five. And so because before we were turning over about twenty-four percent of our calls to South, uh to UVM or Burlington, now that we're taking those, it's just additional revenues per transport. Uh on the expense side, it's the funds for the staff to implement the new work schedule. Um protective clothing for us has become, you know, about five to six thousand dollars a set. We try to staff everyone with two sets of gear uh in section national standards. It's ten years old and it's with no longer eligible for us to use. So we try to on a rotate five years primary, five, five years secondary. Uh because if you go on a run and you get bloodied up, or if you're exposed to price combustion, we want to get that gear laundered immediately, and but you still have to be able, able to do your job, do have your equipment. So um that's just gotten very expensive and with a, and with so much staff turnover, uh now we've got a really a team, a solid team on the field. We're building that out over the next several years. And then computer contracts, you know, when I came here, I was kind of, we were laughing yesterday, uh the rental registry inspector was walking around with an iPad. Um you know, two years ago, we had no technology in the fire station, and now just given um that we're running so much off technology, it just costs us more to implement the, the contracts that we have for this technology.
The, the dispatch um system, uh is that just for South Burlington? Or are we able to provide just for army dispatch services broader? And if so, do we charge for that? Do we expense share? Just what, what's the thought around dispatch?
So we have, uh so, no, it's, uh, you know, let, I mean, look, yeah, and so, uh, so our dispatch center is now has four, what am I called? Workstations, consoles, right? Where you could have four people. Um we currently still staff with, we're a minimum of one, which I think we're, you know, obviously we're trying to get to a minimum of two. Uh so ideally, we want to get to the ability to dispatch for other agencies. So, which is different than what I'll say is the CAD system. We certainly, we share that service with Burlington, but we, we in in the week and dispatch their units without a dispatcher ever doing anything except accepting the recommendation that we can do that back and forth. We can't do that with anybody else. And so there's, it's a huge opportunity still that's um for us to look into, and, and there is a revenue, some revenue that could be gleaned from that. We're not there yet. And Jesse, you'll have probably more that I've danced around.
Um so, uh newish council, so forgive me if you all know this background. Regional dispatch has been a conversation in this commu- in this county for forty years, fifty years. Um Steve and I first met serving on the Central Vermont or the Central Vermont, the Chitting County Public Safety Authority, which was the board stood up to provide dispatch services regionally. Uh that went through a whole town vote in two thousand and eighteen. Uh there were six communities signed on. We were allocating money. So it's a, was its own independent government. Um that failed last winter, um and likely doesn't have a lot of legs to stand back up. It requires, you know, six communities worth of elected officials, managers, police chiefs, fire chiefs, all stay kind of aligned together, pulling in that direction. The, as a result, we have modernized our dispatch center in order to, in order to provide the best services to South Burlington residents, but also in order to think about a shared services model where we are contracting out. So a lot of what both chiefs have talked about is, is going in that direction.
That's in the works now, Jesse, with other communities? Are those discussions ongoing?
Uh we are prioritizing the contract, settling the contract conversation first, and then those conversations will pick up.
And just one thing we heard, uh Tim and I heard it this morning at the CCRPC. They referenced the November uh findings will be issued regarding the regional and county government discussion. And one of the things Michael Baker said that he, he guesses he doesn't know for sure will be in there is how to make it easier for municipalities to coordinate. Uh because right now, as it is, he said, is very difficult for municipalities coordinating. In many cases, it creates the creation of a new municipality and, and Green Mountain Transfer is a municipality, and then that makes it very challenging to coordinate. So hopefully it'll make all our lives easier.
Uh so FY twenty-six capital improvements. Uh it's the second year of the station alerting system, so we broke this up between FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six. We're lucky enough to uh have a contract with the, with the uh provider, the software, we actually implemented in FY twenty-five fully. Uh so this is just the second portion of that to pay off the contract in FY twenty-six. And that's allowing, um that allows each of the spaces in the fire stations to be programmed to whatever piece of apparatus they're on. So if a bunk room only has ambulance people in it, they can program the system, so only ambulance calls go off in that room. So it allows for better rest and recovery. Uh it allows for better data sharing between Burlington, South Burlington, the Air Guard Fire Department. Uh we've talked about it before, and we put, placed it into the Air Guard uh fire station. Second thing is uh vehicles. We have an aging fleet. Um we do have two ambulances on order, one which we're hoping to see in the next ninety days, probably shows in it ninety days ago. And then one in January twenty-six, we've built out a CIP for replacing ambulance about every four years. Uh so when we receive the next one in a few, you know, hopefully a few months, uh weeks, uh that'll put three in our fleet, two frontline, and then one reserve. So one of those are out for maintenance. Uh we'll still be able to have two ambulances staffed. And then uh we ordered, we've ordered a fire truck, a fire engine, which we'll see uh second quarter of twenty-six, and a ladder truck, which will see the first quarter of twenty-seven. Uh so basically, and those are about a ten-year uh replacement plan going from uh new to frontline, and then we get about another ten years out of them for a total of twenty years uh in the reserve capacity. Uh so we're trying to just build out a good plan here to uh have the capital improvements in place. The money is in place to uh make those purchases and keep a good fleet on the road. Uh and then the last is station renovations. Fire Station One has no sprinkler system. About a hundred and fifty times a year, a fire station burns to the ground. Uh we've also transitioned a lot of our equipment from combustion engines to battery power. Uh different tools on the fire apparatus, so on and so forth, which obviously creates a lithium battery concern. Uh the chief was at a recent conference, and they discussed four recent fire station fires due to lithium-ion batteries. Um now, if we had a fire in Station One, we could lose seven pieces of fire apparatus and basically render the, complete the organization, you know, unable to provide any service. So uh that money is to sprinkle Fire Station One.
I can just add one more thing about the fleet. Um this is a real privilege that we haven't, that the council has taken action on the past couple of years to create the Capital Reserve Fund. So at the recognition of the chief and the deputy chief, we are investing in ca- in fleet capital every year to amass funds to buy multimillion-dollar pieces of fleet as opposed to bonding for it and taking on the debt. That um saves a lot of interest money over time, and it is a kind of excellent, a really excellent innovation that council put into place and a um financial efficiency for the community.
Will the um, the water system put out a battery fire?
Yeah, the reality is mostly, you know, in, in our case, there, it could be very, well, the sprinkler system would be a very small fire. So when, even when we've seen these batteries burn at beta, a very small trickle of water contains it. Our problem is a small battery fire in the compartment when the trucks parked in the station. It's, you know, it then it starts burning other things, and pretty soon you've just taken the station out of operation. So
So it's a containment question.
Very much.
Battery will burn out, but it won't expand.
Exactly. Our emerging issues, you know, certainly, um we've, we've talked about this last year. I, at some point, the community is gonna need to invest in a dedicated shift commander. Um that's the one position that, that's, you know, we've made incredible investments in the fire department the last two or three years. That is the one position that we're going to have to start to look at. We have this, um, you know, we, we, we have, we put a big team on the field every day. There's uh ten people working. Um but the boss is mobile. He's a, he or she is dedicated also as a company officer. And on those low-frequency, high-risk events, um he's having to abandon his crew. Currently, it's all he's, and that's why I'll use that pronoun. Um and so, you know, Burlington is currently the, in, in Burlington, when they were running five thousand calls a year, had a dedicated shift commander. There was a turn, there was a point when that has to hit, and we're, and we're really approaching that, and that will be something that we'll be looking to bring you some sort of solution on over the next two or three fiscal years. Um maintenance and modernization of our facilities, as we've somewhat just talked about the sprinkler system. Um but in with, between gender diversity and just a changing culture, you know, back in uh when I came on the job, many of the employees that started were out of the military. They were used to, almost all men, and certainly all used to common bathrooms and common bunk rooms. It wasn't, didn't bother to have two or three people huddled around the same urinal. Um and I, and I'll, and I say that only because our current facilities are not, Station Two was comparable, is allowed, so that has uh individual bathrooms, individual bunk rooms. We don't have that now. Um and, you know, in their capital plan, we're, we're gonna bring you over the next two or three years. The, so the monies that we think we can do that in space, create individual bunk rooms, another bathroom upstairs. Really just to be more contemporary and meet the needs of a modern workforce. Um professional development, succession planning, I could have put this on um the succession, on the success stories as well. We too have several people that are nearing the end of their career goals. Um and where do, I think we've done a really good job, a really exciting, the, the things that we've been able to put in place. Uh Chief Francis will be the first, uh the first one to, to punch out in July of this year, um and we've already identified his replacement. Um and so uh that's, that's been very exciting. And then finally, rental registry and zoning enforcement. That it's been interesting, um I had never, I had not contemplated this when we're talking about rental registry. But what we're often finding is, and is properties that are not zoned for uses in a private building, or they have created an ADU in the basement, and so perhaps they meet the fire code, which is my wheelhouse, right? Um but they don't meet, they're not, they're not zoned for that, or they don't have a zoning permit, or um, or, or in, or they could never meet that. Um I think we, Paul and I have had a lot of conversations about this. Um my objective is safe housing, um but at the same time, we should be in compliance. And so we are going to, uh this is one of those emerging issues that we're just gonna have to collectively work on um to tackle.
So one thing I remember when we talked about the uh rental registry was fitting out the space for the extra folks. It's, what, what's this? They said that, I, I remember we kind of parked in discussion of are the fees sufficient to self-fund all that? And we were gonna, we were gonna kind of come back to that at some point.
So last week, you moved in, you, and you, you, on a previous agenda, you authorized uh a temporary office structure uh to be brought in, that they moved into that office space last week. Um we, Chris and I will be bringing you a plan, bringing the manager a plan in the next six to eight, six months, I must say by summer, that will allow us to go to construction um on addition to that fire station to house um those those, that, the entire prevention division. There's a lot of foot traffic into that uh into that office every day between seeing for construction drawings and or the rental registry now. Uh so I think having appropriate space for them. I personally think we need to bring a three-pronged approach for it, that it shouldn't all be on the backs of the rent, the renters or the rental registry. Um and I don't know, so I think you're gonna see something on the line of a surcharge on, we'll bring some sort of surcharge for our permit, all of our permit fees, but captures all permits in development, not just the rental registry. Um it'll look at the rental registry money. Is there, there's going to be excess capacity there. And then perhaps just the general fund contribution from the capital plan. I think those three things will allow us to get this done fairly simply. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How is everyone doing? Yeah.
We're taking another break, five minutes. Well, I was thinking before we ended that, you know, the water and sewer really are the vasculature of the city. I never thought of it like that. The veins and the arteries, right? You know, the veins carry the fresh water and the, you know, and there's the, the wastewater and the arteries carry the, the fresh water, you know?
Didn't you like it when he was talking about stormwater? We had that sound.
Yeah.
And I was like, wow, that was really well done.
Tom's not even in the room. Okay, so I am going to uh fly through this general government presentation, this uh presentation. Hey, Holly, do you mind coming up here too? A few of a specific slide. Uh includes information from folks that you more generally, more often see at council meetings, so hopefully are a bit more familiar. So just a overall theme that I, you've heard today, you heard from me on the second, there's Tom, you missed, you missed it. Uh this, this budget is a hold-steady budget. You are, you are not seeing a lot of new things presented. Uh so the general government, we is the amalgamation of all of the backbone departments of the city, the departments that serve all of the other departments and all of the residents of the city um with planning and zoning and community development lumped in, and other communities that really should be its own presentation, but you hear from them a lot. Um so we've kind of lumped them into this presentation, and then of course, uh finance, city clerks, HR, IT, legal, um and communications. Uh so this is our backbone organizational structure. I think you're pretty familiar with all, with all of us. Um we will have an announcement about Climate Action Manager, hopefully uh by the end of the week or Monday, depending on acceptance. See how it goes. Uh but more or less, we are fully staffed with uh the GIS analyst and the Climate Action Manager um coming. And then, of course, our HR Director of Transition. Um so our FY twenty-four successes, uh much like Tom, we tried to quantify some of um the volume of things we process, like um almost eleven thousand invoices a year, eighty-two million dollars of tax collection, hundred and thirty-one committee-supported volunteers, uh supporting committee work. Uh this year, our successes in FY twenty-four, our success is really focused on modernizing our systems. As you are well aware, we are um well into permit modernization. On your agenda on Monday, you'll see a contract award for a new finance system, and in early January, we were launching a new website. In F Y twenty-four, we hired thirty-seven new colleagues, including key people in this room, including Andy, Nick. Adam and Jared, welcome to the team. We also did a lot of I T modernization. We adopted our fir- our first handbook in almost fifteen years, employee handbook. Received a clean audit and oriented a new city council, which took a little bit of effort, guys. You were easy.
Jesse, let's go back to our slides. So the data manager and J S analyst, is that? I thought we were hiring one person for that kind of slot. Is it now we're hiring two?
Yep. So we tried to hire one person last year and had no success in finding that professional. So we figured out a way with an existing budget dollars to break that out and build both capacities. So the G I S analyst will report to Anna.
So that'd be like two part-time roles now then, or? Full-time roles. How do you maintain the same budget that I have two people doing? I don't understand.
So we have a lot, we have. Funding across the enterprise and general fund budgets to pay consultants to do G I S work now. And to pay for technology work. So in order.
Bringing it in-house.
Bringing it in-house in that capacity allows us, allowed us to find the, to put together the funding for the two positions. And lower one, you know, the G I S analyst will be a subordinate to Anna, not a two Anna level position.
And there's enough work to go around for two.
Absolutely.
Okay, second that.
Uh, Paul, you want to take this one?
Sure. So just briefly, over the past year, there's been a lot of major work that you all have done, that our planning commission has done, including adoption of a city plan. Which is almost a year ago now, and is used daily by our work, the major set of L D R amendments that you adopted last month. And water and sewer service areas has been a big area. We've seen a lot of development taking place and buildings opening up, both in the commercial industrial area. By the airport and in our city center area. I see some data there on new housing, new decisions. Emerging issues over the next couple of, next year or two, a lot more to be taking place around Act one eighty-one. The regional plan must have in each part of the state must be updated for their future land use map. That's going to have significant implication to Act two fifty and to our centers designation. There will be decision points for you coming up in the late spring on that. So we're already in a lot of close engagement. About how we can take advantage of all these new opportunities formed by this. We are currently, our planning commission heavily working in the regulatory updates to our city center form-based code. Us, City Managers Office, Alana, over the next few years will be doing a lot of work. In the next stage of city center investment, not just the regulatory side, but partnership side. In lots of characteristics that are not just the sort of greenfield that we've seen, but a lot of infield. Infill gray fields, brown fields, areas like San Remo Drive, the U Mall, Williston Road. Proposed in this next year's work plan is to be working on the area between the airport and the Chamberlain neighborhood. We're looking at a couple of different funding sources for that. One may be the general fund, one may be funding associated with. Airport, but really that's something identified in the city plan as planning for the future of this area holistically. In terms of economic opportunities, transportation and green space for the neighborhood. We are. Making significant, significant progress on our partnerships with the Regional Planning Commission this year, including current projects of the Active Transportation Plan. Our work with E V fleet examination and. Going to be kicking off shortly, a project, a this year project on. Public E V charging availability. Looking forward to next year, you're going to be seeing at your next regular meeting, first meeting in January. The Planning Commission's recommendations for next year's projects, which will include E V charging in existing multifamily buildings. As identified in the climate, climate action plan and A D A transition plan. Looking at the intersection of Mary Street, Williston Road, that whole area for transportation improvements. And further work on the Active Transportation Plan, next stage of that. And then lastly, on the development review side, it's very cyclical in this work, especially in our relatively. You know, small market, we see some major players go through a cycle of conceiving plans, going through permitting. Preparing their financing, constructing, opening new buildings. With the pandemic, a lot of that got bunched up. And so what we've seen is we've been in the cycle the last year and a half of a lot of construction. We're seeing a little bit less, as you see on there, of new projects that have been in front of the D R B for the last few months. We're now starting to see this cycle beginning over again, where we're getting a lot of initial inquiries of, I'm thinking about this next project. So we're anticipating in a few months' time to start to see a lot more projects back in front of the Development Review Board, that will then be the next cycle of construction. So. That's my quick update.
So Paul, so I just, the chart on the right, so it's, there've been about three hundred or so new, three thirty or so new units. Permitted in fiscal year twenty-four, is that?
Correct, that is, that's new permitted, a punch of that is what's across the street that started construction. So that took place. Early in the fiscal year.
So of that three thirty, I'd love to know how much is owner versus renter? How much is affordable, permanently affordable versus market?
Sure. So I can get you that. I think what might be helpful, this is the D R B stage of permitting. What I think would be helpful to get to, I can give it either way, but the actual construction permits for that work is more an indicator of. Coming online in the next six months, this might be two to three years out of construction.
And am I correct now that, that all these new units will be built to our new like renewable energy standards? They're all, the the effective date is now. Eighty-five percent is renewable.
Yes, I would say almost entirely. There may be one or two sort of oddities where, you know, something got a. Permit and then they continued the permit for some period of time and they haven't started construction, but I would say almost entirely. Also, anything that submits a. Applicable permit to the fire department or to us as of July first, twenty twenty-four, has to meet the twenty. Twenty-four state C Bs and R Bs, which then triggers our new standards as well.
So at some point, I'd love to know how folks are. Implementing that standard, is that all electric, they do, you know, fossil fuel, heat pump, you know? Dual systems, it just, it'd be really good information to understand what people are doing if we have that.
We can look into that. That's something we can communicate with fire department on. We don't necessarily have that as a data point given to us, but we can look into.
I'm sorry, just last question. You mentioned that the planning commission is going to be possibly thinking about E Vs in existing. E V infrastructure and existing multifamily?
Not necessarily the planning commission. It is a project for which it's in the Climate Action Plan, Transportation Sector. We, you're going to be seeing at your next meeting, the Planning Commission's recommendation of. Funding from the Regional Planning Commission is to undertake that project next fiscal year.
Okay, you know, so curious, I wasn't. It wasn't intuitive to me that we'd have the authority at our L D Rs to do something about existing.
It's not necessarily a regulatory tool.
Okay, okay.
It may be a, as as outlined in the Transportation Sector Implementation Plan, a lot of it is. Identifying a strategy for how to help these property owners. So it may not be regulatory at all.
Yeah, okay.
That's what, it's, it's to follow basically what's in the implementation plan there. You could get more on it next month on that.
Oh, he was city clerk calling. Well, not the whole fiscal year. So I'll just go through some of the successes. You know, we kind of think about our operations in this past year as statutes. Elections and staff. So that's most of what we've been doing. Clearly, we ran three successful elections. Thanks to everybody up there. And we do see a trend of that probably continuing. So the off-cycle year of just one town meeting. Election is, you know, likely to be two or three, or hopefully not four town meeting elections. But we will be prepared for those. Community engagement is another aspect of things that we have focused on. We did transition to a new animal licensing program that was a cloud-based version. That would better support online registrations. That's now evolving again as we're working with Stephen and new permitting. Which we will launch in January. So the client base is already kind of accustomed to doing a lot of things online. And this will only enhance it in the future. We also engaged in an event at the Wheeler Dog Park where we were out in the field doing active registrations. And reminding people ahead of licensing deadlines. So we will definitely continue to do that. We will support a distribution of three thousand COVID tests, flash forward to F Y twenty-five, where we did ten thousand. So I, I think our COVID tests have now run out. And also we're in the community supporting voter registration drives at the high school, at senior housing facilities and directly at our own senior center. So we talk about staffing, very significant staffing changes as Donna Kenville retired. In August of last year, and I assumed responsibilities and then was elected thankfully in March. And we also had two assistant city clerk hires, Brian and Shane. So lots of transitions in staff in, in the city clerk's office. The first year of transition has allowed for some vault maintenance. So as you remember, we have two vaults, one at the city hall, so right over there. And the other one's still at five seventy-five, right behind the school district offices. And so we've been auditing the old vault and making sure that we've pulled over everything that. Is is relevant to what people will be researching and needing to this vault. And are subtly have changed the old vault to an elections vault. So that's where we're keeping all of our materials. And anything that needs to, you know, be in the waiting list to be purged, things that we're not touching every day are now over there. But one of the projects that had been started and that we've really activated. In twenty-four and continue to do is auditing of the minutes. So this is an ongoing project. We probably will take us the rest of the year to finish. But then it will be complete and all the historic minutes will be very organized and easy to find. And then we will continue forward maintaining those in the vault right here. We also completed the ordinance codification process, which you're all very, well, not all of you, I guess, but most familiar with. And so now we have beautiful bound books of our code and a process of how that gets updated in time online. And then every six months, the hard copy gets updated. So we just got our newest edition actually last week. So that process was several years in the, in the making. It kind of stalled during COVID, but picked back up. And then our land record digitization and access, so our land records went online for everybody to view online. August a year ago. And so with that, we digitized and put online what we had, but there were still some historical documents to be done. So we created a contract for that and just actually finished that up. So now all of our land records are viewable online. There are some price points to kind of talk about online. Research is considerably more expensive than in-house research. So I will be coming to you next. Sometime in the near future with requests to kind of change those. But when they were established, they were significantly higher than in-house research. So that's successes of twenty twenty-four and what's been happening in the clerk's office. So in terms of the F Y twenty-six for general government, again, we're holding steady to try and minimize the impact for the taxpayers. The biggest expenditure shifts are renegotiation of our stop-loss insurance, the G M T contribution. And potentially the new funding requirements to meet the new, the state's new open meeting law requirements for archiving. Most importantly to me, what we need in F Y twenty-six is time to successfully implement these modernization processes. We're very thankful that you all have invested in them. And it takes a huge amount of work of a lot of people in this room to successfully do that kind of system. Transfer and implementation and launch. I did want to call out, so the next couple of slides are kind of at the suggestion of our previous meeting on the second, so just a few more data points. So these show. Information on our non-property tax revenues and how, and historically what they have looked like. Most significantly, I want to point out that in the last three years, so the post-COVID years. Our non-property tax revenue has increased twenty-seven percent, while our property tax revenue has increased fourteen and a half percent. So we are trying to leverage those other funding streams. And then it explains there what our non-property tax revenues are. And of course, this is in your packet. Just a quick note on planning and zoning fees. So one of the, you asked us to look at areas where we could again increase. True up those fees to other communities. So Paul is in the process of doing that for all of our planning and zoning fees. This presents some information about where we currently stand as compared to others. And of course, you will have to take action on those fee adjustments in the months to come. Included in this budget is the thought that we will have net new twenty thousand dollars in permitting fees to the F Y twenty-six budget. So some adjustment. I was remiss, you all very appropriately pointed out that in our December second. Count, presentation, we did not actively call out all of the efforts underway, which will have future budget considerations. So we wanted to rectify, I wanted to rectify that today. So that includes. Plans that are actively underway, the Active Transportation Plan, the Sidewalk Assessment, Parks and Open Space Master Plan, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, the Parking Study. And then also anticipating the bringing out a Climate Action Manager to review, to bring expertise to our current set of. Recommendations and implementation plans, as well as our building and thermal implementation plan, a cultural plan and a housing needs assessment. And I imagine some other things that may pop up in the next few months. A lot, we included these TIF slides in your last presentation. We're not going to go through them in depth today. But what I wanted to call your attention to was Alana put together this, I think, really excellent summary sheet of, of these very. Complex models that we track very closely. This summary sheet is meant to aggregate that all up. So the, what you see here is three different scenarios. Our known scenario, meaning for all the projects where there are currently permits pulled. What, if only that redevelopment happens in a TIF district, what that scenario is. If in, starting in F Y twenty-seven, we add one new sixty-one unit building a year, what that scenario is. And then what we're considering sort of a break-even scenario of thirty-five new units. These are all models and hypotheticals of what might happen in the future. But what this shows you is the balance of the TIF fund in thirty-seven, the year we would completely, we would complete paying off. Debt and then the new fund, the new revenues going into the general fund and the surplus at the completion year.
Jesse is the, for our purposes, is the very last column, the bottom line that. Known, we wind up with a five hundred dollar surplus, which is, which is the bottom line column here for us?
Scenarios.
No, I understand the road, so I'm talking about the columns.
So the new F Y thirty-eight general fund annual revenue, that's the new municipal revenue that would transition from. Paying off TIF debt to the general fund. So annually, we would get, under those three scenarios, those amounts of money into the annual budget. And the final column is the fund balance at the end of the TIF, that one-time money that you could use for other things.
Sorry, so, so, um, there's a, so confused what the three columns are. So is the first column. Our shortfall or windfall in respect of the TIF debt?
A lot of you want to give it a try?
So, so the twenty thirty-seven TIF fund balance is the aggregate of. What the fund balance is in twenty thirty-seven, including both municipal increment. And state ed fund increment minus all of the payments that have been made on TIF debt. So that is negative in the known scenario, positive in the other two. The twenty thirty-eight general fund annual revenue is what the increment is just looking at the municipal increment. Not counting the state increment on an annual basis. That we, in our model, that changes, increases slightly each year, just due to the change in the tax rate. But, but that's what it is in twenty thirty-eight. So I made it the same for each of the different scenarios. And then the last one. And then the last one is what the municipal surplus would be, the municipal increment, so any ed fund surplus. Would go back to the state, the first line is the known line, so it's only represents the surplus in twenty forty-one. Once um all of the debt that negative two point nine million has been paid off. Um, whereas for the other years, it's at twenty thirty-eight when the last debt payment is made.
So I'm sorry, I'm still confused, so we, we borrowed however, a million, many million dollars. That and that the um, that will kind of finally come to in twenty thirty-seven?
It, 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 uh, the last payment is in twenty thirty-eight.
Twenty thirty-eight, and which, which of these columns, if any, shows us, are we, you know? In deficit or surplus in respect of?
The first line.
Okay, so that's our number, so in the first column, if we don't do any, i- if it's just what's known, we're going to be short about three million dollars. Okay, that, that's what I'm saying.
Can I clarify too, it, the scenario with the units, that's units per year, correct?
That's for ten years between twenty twenty-seven and twenty thirty-seven.
So is it units over ten years?
It's units per year.
Per year.
Starting in twenty thirties.
Just a possible suggestion, it might be good to, some of the comments you just made might be helpful to footnote on this, because I couldn't do this standalone. Uh, but maybe do that notation per year as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
So uh, our last emerging issue slide, you've, you've seen these before, we have two collective bargaining agreements there up, we have hard-to-fill positions. That we are trying to accommodate for in those uh negotiations. Uh, we have emerging staff needs, we have uh bringing on new, two new professionals that will be leading uh community priority initiatives. And will, I'm sure, make suggestions, uh, we'll be updating the form-based code to incentivize the growth in city center and the parking fund. And its future organizational structure. So with that, you have heard from all the departments, you now have. Officially. Four minutes for your discussion.
Perfect.
Go, go, say, finish, see you next year.
That's how you keep us brief.
You also have an hour or more on Monday night, as much time as you want on the sixth and the thirteen. How could, how can we help?
Well, I'll just say, I appreciate all, all the work and the input for this, this presentation and um. I look forward to the hour of Monday night. Anybody else? Ready eat? Anybody else want to eat?
Is there anything you want, Mike, you look like you want to say something, is there anything you want us to bring? That's.
I just wanted to clarify that it. You know, you, I guess you guys saw the emails, you answered my question, is if we choose to go with one of these other options. But yet keep the budget at three point four. It would be after we made that collective decision, if we come to such a decision, and then you would come back to us with, if you're going to make the trade-off in a week's time or something. You'd come up, well, if you're really going to go down this path, here's what we would advise to cut if you're going to try to stay at three point four. It's not something that we have to dig down into these micro budgets to try to figure out ourselves.
So how this typically works, you can, you can do either, it's your, it's your budget now, we, we, this is kind of the official turnover of this budget to you all. Um. I think what has worked most successfully in the past is the council to say, we are interested in approving this budget as presented, move forward. We are. You have a recommended budget, um, we are interested in considering adding these things within this amount of tax capacity. Bring us some scenarios on how we might do that, uh, we are interested in reducing this tax rate, bring us some scenarios in which you do that. It would be helpful to know from you all, what are those scenarios you want us to explore? Um, either now, in the next couple of minutes, or on Monday night, and then we could bring you those scenarios on the sixth for additional conversation. In advance of a vote on the thirteen.
I, I'd love to know, um, assuming we. Allocate some more money, more money for striping and put some money aside anticipating um. Sidewalk and shared use path maintenance needs, um, how we fund those two things. While maintaining the, the budget um target that we've set for ourselves.
And Andrew, when you say target, the lowest, the three point three nine target?
Yeah. And I, I would add the same, I agree, I, I think it's very worth, I agree with Andrew, it's worth looking at. That, because I think it's an important possibility, but we need to know what the trade-off would be, uh, but the same, I would say with the uh. S B three C budget that we anticipate hearing, I think we already know, it's been circulated. I, I think that's since TIF is so central and the return is so central to us, I think that that would be key, at least I would like to know what. You guys would suggest as a potential trade-off. And I guess you, there's one here, one thing on this funding option list where it says, one-time funding for airport Chamberlain planning. And I think we all have talked, I, I, I don't want to speak for everyone, but we've all talked about to your, the philosophy of. Now using one-time money to pay for reoccurring costs, you, you've put this down as a one-time funding. Does that mean that this is something that could come from some part of one? One-time funds and not be seen as a reoccurring cost that we're not trying to steal from Peter to pay Paul? And if so, what, what, what would be the appropriate thought for that?
Have we all seen something from S B C threes? Did I miss that? Sorry. I, oh, okay, I, I didn't see anything from S B C three.
They're coming in on Monday night.
No, you said we've all seen it.
I, I, I.
We will see.
I'm sorry, I said, I attended the meeting where they talked about it, so I sort of.
Bob Britt was here at your last meeting and said it was coming and said it was going to be thirty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, that's true.
What it was.
Could, could we have just a quick restatement to, to all of us in, in advance of Monday night, of all the penny? Penny for Pat's, penny for this, just a restatement of what those funds are, their, their balances and, and how they're restricted and, and when they expire. So, and I don't know if we want to have a full discussion about that on Monday night, but they might be integral to future budget discussions. Because maybe we want to start looking at those programs and see whether they need uh some change.
That means I need it today. Okay.
I also, um. Wanted to know how we can look at Community Justice Center and Community Outreach Funding. Um, the shortfalls. So that those programs somehow fit into our budget, um, and whether that's. The potential to have money coming from the state, or whether this is something that we're just going to have to make up, if so, where?
So, yep.
Just to clarify, because is, was it correct, I, I agree with, with uh, Lord, you said. Were correctly understanding uh the chief that there may be just a need to do a temporary fix until May when we hear more numbers and. And it, is it possible to do a budget exercise where you sort of put like? These that sort of cover with the notion that it would then come back to the budget, they're not needed to be called upon if the state comes through in May?
So, uh, two different, so backing up for a minute, in the three point three nine percent budget. Is fully funding community outreach at the level Howard Center has asked us to fund it this year. It's built in. Um, what the chief was articulating is that does include fifty, twenty-five thousand dollars of brand-new money. Um, that also includes an off, actually includes, I think, thirty-three thousand dollars of brand-new money with an offset of twenty-five thousand dollars. Of you all allocating opioid revenues to that. Um, it from, for the C J C, we have included forty thousand. Yes, of additional dollars in the police budget to cover. Some contribution to something yet to be defined by the legislature for the Community Justice Center next year. And that is also baked into the three point three nine percent budget, is there something else you're looking for beyond that?
That's what I was asking, so already baked into the budget. Uh, there will be no disruption of those two key services going out this next year, and then the only question is, will the state? Pick up those costs going forward if they choose to refund them or?
So no inter, I would say no interruption on the commu, on the community outreach side of things, that's an agreement we have with Howard Center, that's set. On the community justice side of things, there will be an interruption, we don't know what that interruption is, because that will come out of the legislative session. We have some ideas on what we will advocate for, um, that I'm happy to talk to the council about in the weeks to come. Uh, but there will be an interruption to that, and the reason to put in the forty thousand dollars is to try and maintain as much locally as we can.
I, I did have a chance to talk to some of the legislators on Monday, whatever day it was, and. The general direction was that the potential to lose all of the funding was slim. But no commitment to what part of the funding might come back, but from a material standpoint, I think the way it's being budgeted. Reflects what the need is, and if there is a legislative action. Um, again, it may not be that material to the total funding, but it would be some upside. That could be allocated to increased need that we've heard from all the departments here.
Just one other, while we're on this topic, one other note, that's not necessarily a budget impact note, but you will hear from the chief and I more about this in the weeks to come. Is that what the other part of the state statute change is not only the shifting of the fiduciary and the uncertainty about the budget. It's also saying that Channing County will only have one pre-charge site. We currently, we have four pre-charge sites, so we are in partner, we are working, the chief and I spent yesterday afternoon with the chief's managers. And C J C directors of the other communities to try and say, what does it look like if we are regionalizing, are supporting that work? In a different way while maintaining the commitment to having C J C embedded with our police department.
Just me, one last one for me is um. Perhaps also a conversation about whether some of these items could be appropriately funded with surplus. And what our surplus is, for instance, um, maybe some of the safe route to school requests could be thought of kind of, you know, one-time. One-time items and whether it would be appropriate to use surplus for those, or, or for perhaps other things um that are currently in the budget.
That's.
Anything else? Item five, other business? No other business? Then uh, motion to adjourn? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Sue, it was unanimous.